All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. One point I need to remind everyone that you are being videoed by the district. Looks like we have another camera in the room tonight. Just a reminder for anyone videoing, no obstructions are created between the board and the audience. No interviews are conducted in the meeting while the board is in session. No commentary, adjustments of equipment or positioning of operators. So therefore it would distract the board or audience while the board is in session. If everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please, Ms. Jones.
Brad Prando.
Here.
Vaughn Fortin.
Here.
Sarah Jones here.
Craig Corbola.
Here.
Dana Wells.
Jenny here.
Jeff Wolfersberger.
Here.
Tim Wood.
Here. Awesome. Addenda. Does anyone have anything to add or remove from tonight's meeting? I would like to add live streaming to the agenda. I second that. If there are no questions, Mrs. Jones if you would please.
Okay, Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah, yes. Craig?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Thank you all. That would be 5.04 for tonight's meeting. Comments from the public?
Let's start with Troy Fortin.
If you would, please state your name and address and any group or affiliation that you're with.
Cool, I am Troy Fortin. For those of you who don't know me, I live on Capitol Ave Northwest here. I've been a teacher here for nine years, this is my 10th year. I just wanted to speak tonight and thank the board for giving the students and staff an option to wear masks. I know there's a lot back and forth going for that, but I wanted to speak on behalf of the positive side. I see an overwhelming majority of our students not wearing them in the schools. I would say 95%. And that speaks very loudly of what the parents want, what the students want. And there's a lot of staff members as well. So I just want to thank you for that and thank you for letting me speak first. I have gymnastics to go to, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next is Ben Newman.
Hi, I am Ben Newman. I live over on Clear Lake Avenue and my oldest son just started kindergarten. So I have been catching myself up on the board business for the last year. And I am really becoming very concerned about the transparency of this board. Their professionalism, especially their professionalism, and their sound judgment. So there's been a lot of shady things going on here lately. I think they would appear to anyone as shady when videos disappear and reappear. So I have three proposals tonight. The first is to amend bylaws 168.1 so that the board secretary publishes all meeting minutes, is responsible for publishing all meeting minutes at the same time that they are required to be posted in the superintendent's office on the internet. Second, I would like you to amend 168.1 to require all meetings to be video recorded and they be posted on the internet for one year for the public consumption. Three, I would like that all board emails and text correspondence be published on the internet as they are open records. And I would like you to amend 167.5 to require that all board correspondence be published on the internet within 30 days. In closing, I have lost my trust in this board to perform and lead this district and especially to choose a new superintendent. And I think you guys have a long way to go to regain my trust. And putting these proposals in place would be a good start. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Crystal Newman?
She's not here right now.
Jessica Green?
Hello and good evening. My name is Jessica Green and I am a Penfield graduate, coach, and district resident. I am devastated to hear about the resignation of our superintendent. The Penfield School District was fortunate to have Mr. Kevin Simmons as our superintendent for the past two years. This man is passionate about education and community. Mr. Simmons had a vision for the future of our children, a vision I had hoped my son would one day be a part of. When I first met him back in August of 2019, I was not sure what to expect. However, when Mr. Simmons warmly welcomed me with an enthusiastic handshake and sat down with me one to one to discuss a few concerns I had, I knew right then that he was genuinely interested in helping our community grow. He was also impressed me how quickly he made it his mission to learn the names of every student, teacher, coach, and faculty member. Then two weeks ago, Mr. Simmons had to endure horrendous treatment during this superintendent evaluation, which in no way followed the standard format. In fact, in the fall of 2020 here, high scores in each category. This does prompt the question, what changed from then until now? The Penfield community and our children deserve transparency and accountability from the leaders of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beverly Kelly?
Beverly Kelly, 122 Harriet Lane. It's with a heavy heart that I stand before you this evening. I know how it feels to sit at that table, especially when there's upset in the community. I am proud of the eight years I served on the Penfield School Board. During my tenure, did the board always like each other? No. Did we always appreciate the attitude and comments of administration and staff? No. Did we always appreciate the input and comments from the community? No. Did we sit and whisper between ourselves during meetings? No. Did we act like we're responsible?
All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. One point, I need to remind everyone that you are being videoed by the district. Looks like we have another camera in the room tonight. Just a reminder for anyone videoing, no obstructions are created between the board and the audience. No interviews are conducted in the meeting while the board is in session. No commentary, adjustments of equipment, or positioning of operators. So therefore it would distract the board or audience while the board is in session. If everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call please, Ms. Jones.
Brad Crandall.
Here.
Juan Fortin.
Here.
Sarah Jones, here. Craig Corbola.
Here.
Dana Wos, Jenny, here. Jeff Wolfersberger.
Here.
Tim Wood.
Here.
Awesome. Addenda. Does anyone have anything to add or remove from tonight's meeting? I would like to add, live streaming to the agenda. I second that. If there are no questions, Mrs. Jones if you would please.
Okay, Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah, yes. Craig?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Thank you all. That would be 5.04 for tonight's meeting. Comments from the public?
Let's start with Troy Fortin.
If you would, please state your name and address and any group or affiliation that you're with.
Cool, I am Troy Fortin. For those of you who don't know me, I live on Capitol Ave Northwest here. I've been a teacher here for nine years, this is my 10th year. I just wanted to speak tonight and thank the board for giving the students and staff an option to wear masks. I know there's a lot back and forth going for that, but I wanted to speak on behalf of the positive side. I see an overwhelming majority of our students not wearing them in the schools. I would say 95%. And that speaks very loudly of what the parents want, what the students want. And there's a lot of staff members as well. So I just want to thank you for that and thank you for letting me speak first. I have gymnastics to go to, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next is Ben Newman.
Hi, I am Ben Newman. I live over on Clear Lake Avenue and my oldest son just started kindergarten. So I have been catching myself up on the board business for the last year. And I am really becoming very concerned about the transparency of this board, their professionalism, especially their professionalism, and their sound judgment. So there's been a lot of shady things going on here lately. I think they would appear to anyone as shady when videos disappear and reappear. So I have three proposals tonight. The first is to amend bylaws 168.1 so that the board secretary publishes all meeting minutes, is responsible for publishing all meeting minutes at the same time that they are required to be posted in the superintendent's office on the internet. Second, I would like you to amend 168.1 to require all meetings to be video recorded and they be posted on the internet for one year for the public consumption. Three, I would like that all board emails and text correspondence be published on the internet as they are open records. And I would like you to amend 167.5 to require that all board correspondence be published on the internet within 30 days. In closing, I have lost my trust in this board to perform and lead this district, and especially to choose a new superintendent. And I think you guys have a long way to go to regain my trust. And putting these proposals in place would be a good start. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Crystal Newman? Jessica Green?
Hello and good evening. My name is Jessica Green and I am a Penfield graduate, coach, and district resident. I am devastated to hear about the resignation of our superintendent. The Penfield School District was fortunate to have Mr. Kevin Simmons as our superintendent for the past two years. This man is passionate about education and community. Mr. Simmons had a vision for the future of our children, a vision I had hoped my son would one day be a part of. When I first met him back in August of 2019, I was not sure what to expect. However, when Mr. Simmons warmly welcomed me with an enthusiastic handshake and sat down with me one to one to discuss a few concerns I had, I knew right then that he was genuinely interested in helping our community grow. He was also impressed me how quickly he made it his mission to learn the names of every student, teacher, coach, and faculty member. Then two weeks ago, Mr. Simmons had to endure horrendous treatment during this superintendent evaluation, which in no way followed the standard format. In fact, in the fall of 2020 here, and high scores in each category, this does prompt the question, what changed from then until now? The Penfield community and our children deserve transparency and accountability from the leaders of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beverly Kelly?
Beverly Kelly, 122 Harriet Lane. It's with a heavy heart that I stand before you this evening. I know how it feels to sit at that table, especially when there's upset in the community. I am proud of the eight years I served on the Penfield School Board. During my tenure, did the board always like each other? No. Did we always appreciate the attitude and comments of administration and staff? No. Did we always appreciate the input and comments from the community? No. Did we sit and whisper between ourselves during meetings? No. Did we act like we're responsible, compassionate, and professional individuals? Yes. We knew we were the face of Penfield Schools and knew we were elected to raise the bar for education. We knew our behavior would affect how the community felt about this district. Those in attendance knew we didn't agree. But this community never thought for one moment that we didn't respect everyone involved in this district. I would like to thank those of you who have remained professional during this reality TV show behavior. Shame on the rest of you for the mockery you have made of this institution. Shame on you for scamming this community into believing you cared enough about our children to move this district forward. Shame on you for sitting in these meetings and openly insulting the integrity of others. You are the superintendent's bosses, but your only task is to set policy and procedure and hire the superintendent. You don't have to like the superintendent, but you must allow them the common courtesy we teach our students to display. The superintitle gives them the right to expect respect and courtesy from their board, just as your title merits you the same. We elected you and you have disappointed and embarrassed us. What if your emails were about to become available to the public? Have you broken the Open Meetings Act and discussed board topics and how people should vote? If so, I suggest those involved that this be your last board meeting. If your email shows you have broken the bullying policy set by this school, and if it's broken by a student, can bring their removal from the district, I suggest this be your last board meeting. If your email proves you have kept any employee of this district from effectively performing their duties, harassed them in any way, or denied them the basic human respect and consideration they deserve, I suggest this be your last board meeting. The damage you have done to this important institution is affecting the upcoming board vote and cannot be repaired until some of you leave.
Beverly, I hate to interrupt you, but we're at the three minutes. If you could...
Okay, let me just do more sentences.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I speak for most of the seniors in this community when I report that we wouldn't give you lunch money, let alone millions of dollars. I'm giving you the opportunity to finally do what's best for the children in this district and resign. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have copies for each of you and the media. I've been misquoted before and don't want to give anyone the opportunity to misunderstand. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And my mother is actively dying, so I am leaving and I apologize.
Sorry to hear that.
David Nettleton?
My name is David Nettleton. I live at 11 East Sunset Boulevard here in Penfield. Like somebody else, I also have a problem with your guys' handling of the bylaws. I'm not sure if you guys are aware that one of your sections relates right to the bylaws and calls off section 160 as far as it pertains to the Open Meetings Act. 160 is not a bylaw. It is not there. So I ask that you guys look into it, correct it, and have what 160 is supposed to be. It's supposed to talk about Michigan's Open Meetings Act. Without that, the rest of the bylaws fall apart when it comes to transparency. Our strategic plan has 24 pages. It mentions word "communication" 15 times. Not once does it mention the word "transparency." The bylaws mention "communication" over 25 times. Nowhere does it say "transparency." I think everybody that has watched the meetings go on, there is no transparency. We must have it. Another thing, if somebody brought it up, we need to get back to posting the minutes on the agenda after they're approved. April 19th is the last day the approved minutes are on the website. That's your guys' docs. Please put them back out there. You take time to go ahead and put the financials there. They are there. There is not the meetings. You have approved them. Please take the time to put them there. I notice a lot of people will hand you documents of what they're about to say like I did. Could you post those in their entirety as attachments instead of just saying so-and-so talked about the budget? They gave you a whole document. Post it. It goes back to transparency. Because when you, the secretary or whoever is responsible for doing the minutes, when they do it, all they do is paraphrase real quick. The video is what is giving everybody a chance to see context in the manner for which somebody's talking like me, I use my hands. We know emphasis. It's hard to read emphasis in words. So I'd like to see you guys go ahead and when you redo the Open Meetings Act and you talk about posting the minutes, also post the entire unedited video right there where you would the minutes, right there where you would the budget. You have a space to put it. People, I would say 90% of us have internet. We can go look at it there. A lot of people work. They aren't here. Their only way they can see the conduct of this board and what takes on it in the community is to see the video. So if you could, could you post the video also? It's there and I appreciate your time. Here's a second copy of it.
Thanks, sir.
Kelly Chapman?
Thank you. My name is Kelly Chapman and I live at 15665 Dunn Road. By order of relevance, my two parents are both Penfield graduates. I'm a Penfield graduate. My two children are and will be a Penfield graduate. And if I don't know you, then perhaps you've ridden your snowmobiles through our farms that are in Penfield, one of which is adjacent to Mr. Crandall's. I'm a consultant for ironically organizational efficiency and board effectiveness, so you can imagine my dismay and concern at best by what I and now thousands of others have seen on social media and on the internet. And to that end, I'm here simply to inquire as to the process that you'll undergo by naming acting, an acting, an interim, those are two very different terms, acting and interim, and then a full contractual selection of more permanent leadership in this district. I'd like to know your orderly process that you'll have with proper due diligence, I hope, which is not a quick pull-the-trigger decision, and a pragmatic approach to naming an acting, interim, and full administrative leadership of this district, which I think we all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Kitter?
Hi, my name is Anna Kitter. I live on East Avenue North. I've been a resident of Penfield Township for the last 13 years. I have four kids, all have attended Penfield Schools, and those 13 years is the first time I felt obligated to speak up. I'm here to thank the board for allowing us to make our own choice to mask our children or not. I know it's hard to stand up and make such a controversial decision. This year, I've attended school registration at the high school, the middle school, and done that. I think the majority of our community feels the same as I do. The majority of families were maskless and smiling. There were only a handful wearing masks. The other topic I'd like to address is if the policy changes to mandate masks, that provisions are made to classrooms and buses to allow temperature control. My daughter comes home every day with her mask soaking wet from how hot the bus is. I'd like to also request that when considering our next superintendent, that they are from our community, that they have a long job history in their previous school, and that they are someone that makes our children a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jamie Allen?
Hi guys, I'm Jamie Allen. I work for Penfield. I've been here going into my sixth year now. I drive 18C, so I have a lot of kids. I'm here for our kids. They are suffering, whether you guys realize it or not. I know that you took the masks out of the school if the parents wanted. On the bus, it's killing these kids. They can't breathe. It's hot from... I'm on there for usually around three hours at a time. Try sitting in that mask for three hours at a time with no air conditioning, no nothing. If I'm suffocating, so are they. And they're crammed in there because we don't have enough drivers right now and that's a whole nother issue, but these kids... Basically, I'm being asked to punish these children for not keeping their masks on. And it's distracting me. I'm supposed to be driving. I have the lives of these children in my hands and you guys are more worried about whether Johnny has his mask up. I'm supposed to be looking in my mirror constantly going, "Put your mask up, put your mask up, put your mask up, put your mask up." Do you have any idea how distracting that is to drive? My job is to get these children to and from safely. My job is to make sure that they're not beating each other in the background, that they're not standing up on the bus, things that are easily noticeable when you glance up for a quick second. I should not be driving down the road with my eyes focusing constantly upwards to make sure that they're wearing these masks. Because I'm being told that if they don't wear their mask, it's a warning. If I warn them again or have to do it two or three times, it's a write-up. They get two or three write-ups and they no longer ride the bus. You're not going to have any students. None of them wear them. And I don't agree with them myself. How can I force these kids to suffer like this when I don't believe in it? I'm here, I believe in Penfield. I believe in these kids, I believe in these teachers, I believe in these parents. I don't believe in these masks. And forcing us to distracted drive? You don't know what you're asking us to do. You're putting them at stake by forcing us to make them keep their masks on. Eventually, one of these buses is going to crash because we're so focused on these kids. That's not in our hands. You guys are forcing it. Thank you.
Jared Kurtley?
Jared? Good evening, board members, administration, staff, and community members. My name is Jared Kurtley, 1550 East Avenue North. And I'm here tonight not only as a parent of two kids in the district, but also as the chair of our bond steering committee and someone who cares very deeply about our district and the future of it. I want to first recognize that the past two weeks have been difficult for the community, the district, the administration and staff, and the board alike. And in the middle of all that turmoil is the bond initiative that's on the November 2nd ballot. An initiative that had broad support not only from the board, but from Kevin Simmons, the rest of the administration and staff, and much of the community. An initiative that seemed to have been an area that everyone united on regardless of what was happening in the district. As the past few months and especially the past few weeks have unfolded, I became very concerned with this opportunity to propel the district, that it may be lost. There's a growing sense of concern within the community that the initiative is no longer supported by the board and isn't a priority in the next few months. While I personally may not see eye to eye and agree with the decisions of the board, I have spoken to many of you and know that the bond is still a high priority for this board, either individually or as a board as a whole. I also know that many of you have asked, what can I do to help? Thinking about this over the past few weeks, I have two things that I would ask the school board help with. The first is that this continues to be a priority and that we can continue to work together as a community and as a committee to reach our goal of passing this bond. There are several board members that have a long history with previous bond initiatives as community members, committee leaders, and also now board members. I would love nothing more than to see the hard work put in by these individuals in the past and our current committee members pay off for the passage of the bond. The second ask is that we be as transparent as possible about the process and actions taken by us as individuals and all of us as a team. Much of what I've seen and heard from numerous people in the community in the last couple of weeks is that there's a lack of trust in the board and a concern with the overall management of the bond when it passes. I believe if we can be open, honest, and respectful with what we carry out until November 2nd, we can restore part of that trust and bring this initiative successfully across the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Matt Keener?
Good evening, my name is Matt Keener. I'm a Penfield resident and I live over at 124 Clayton Avenue. Legacy is something that we all strive for, and I know that each and every one of you are working to build your own legacy. Just a few weeks ago, you voted on a proposal to rename our athletic facilities as a legacy of some very influential and impactful members of our Penfield community. So right now, week by week, meeting by meeting, email by email, decision by decision, you're building your legacy. In less than nine months, we've watched a board with many new members grope through the growing pains of learning what it means to be a board member and what that role is. In that time, that short time, we witnessed two of you be accused of intimidating staff members or actions in a board that merited violation of policies that were in place. Those meetings where that was discussed, June 14th and June 28th. Now, June 14th, that wasn't even an agenda item listed at that community of a whole. There was some other reference to Trune Law, but nothing specific. June 28th, it was listed as 5.07. Yet even with the policy in place dealing with bullying, intimidation, and a staff member who did resign, you took no action. You did not hold yourselves accountable. You're building your legacy. We went from a superintendent who received a 94% satisfactory evaluation last fall to his resignation last week. You're building your legacy. Last Tuesday evening, the 24th at 9:00 PM, all the videos of our previous board meetings that had been posted to the school's YouTube channel suddenly disappeared. Mysteriously as well, by the next morning at 8:30 AM, they were restored under what was said to be a miscommunication. Your emails prove otherwise. By the end of last week, all but the August meetings were suddenly gone again. You're building your legacy. So I ask you, what do you want your legacy to be? Many of you are new and you have years to correct your course, to grow, but we challenge you to grow quickly. Some of you only have a year or so left on your terms. Grow even quicker. Dr. Corbola, you've been here the longest. You're the elder statesman of this board and we appreciate your service. Thank you. You've been faithful to this community.
Matt, I hate to cut you off, but you're at three minutes.
Okay, yep. The community is watching, literally and figuratively. Those outside Penfield are continually asking me and other school administrations, what is going on in our district? What they're asking is, what is your legacy going to be? Will it be... That's my three-minute warning.
Thank you.
Closed sessions, infighting, intimidation and hiding, or transparency, professionalism, and building a district known for educational excellence? Will you be known for what you did for the children of Penfield? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is Crystal Newman open now?
Hi, I'm Crystal Newman. I live at 21473 Clear Lake Avenue. Last time I spoke was unplanned and very emotional feel, so I kind of wrote something out a little bit. I'm very frustrated, as I'm sure a lot of people are. Frustrated with the professionalism, last time I didn't mention I've sat on a board. I've been president of Moms Club of Battle Creek. We had more professionalism than this and we're a small organization of maybe everyday moms. I'm frustrated with the lack of transparency, things being hidden. It's getting shady, to be honest. A lot of the dealings are just shady. It's getting shady, to be honest. A lot of the dealings are just shady. I'm frustrated with the overall ability to make sound judgments. I've lost confidence. I literally had my first child start kindergarten this year, and already I've lost confidence with Penfield schools, as have other families. I am worried that after forcing out a superintendent who I found out had, what, a ninety-four percent approval rating? He's gone! Ninety-four percent! I mean, that's passing. Any grades, that's passing. I'm afraid that you are going to push out new Penfield families for your bottom line. Less Penfield families, less money. Less money, extracurricular activities. I've already heard music is gone, or art, something is gone in Dunlap. Sports, you guys care about sports a lot? It affects that as well. So, stop pushing people away. Be honest, be truthful. For those that don't know, the board members do, I've heard it before, their job is to create policies. Uh, like I said, I've been on a board. Your job is policies. She said, "Hire the superintendent, let them do their job." These people are creating policies that affect our youngest community members. Your children, my children. Do better. Board business, as it's been happening, has been very cryptic. Um, just watching and getting caught up, as I said, new kindergartner, I'm kinda just floating along, trying here. A lot of your meetings are very cryptic. You talk about things, but you talk about them in a very secretive way. Be honest. Before, like, just let us know what's happened. Parents are confused. A lot of new parents that, like I said, have new kindergartners, they're walking into this horrified at what is happening with our school system. They're turning to homeschool, like I said. Less families, less thoughts. That affects our children's education, your children's education. They're directly affecting that. It has been one week since that last meeting, and already, like, was mentioned, the YouTube videos. One week. If anyone was here last week or heard the meeting, their ending comments were very, "I'm sorry, I apologize, let's look forward to the future," this and that. A week! Couldn't even make it a week without being dishonest. One week. We expect more from our children. My kindergartner just learned about paws today in their first assembly. Do they follow that? We're asking our children to follow these things, and the leaders can't even do that.
I gotta do it three minutes. If you could wrap it up, please.
Yes. Like many have said, "I plan to stay here. I plan to be involved." Yes, it sounds weird, but you are being watched. We are showing up. And we've had it. And like I said about giving second chances, after this last week, you don't deserve one. Thank you.
Christine Finch?
Hi, my name's Christine Finch. I'm a nineteen ninety Penfield graduate. Yes, I'm old. Um, my daughter graduated in two thousand and eleven, and my other daughter is a current middle schooler. I do wanna give the board credit for standing up and keeping our kids without masks. However, I do wanna state that we parents have had enough of the forced mandates, knee-jerk reactions, and government overreach in the decision-making regarding the well-being of our children. We will not co-parent with the government or Penfield schools. We have watched our children succumb to harm at the hands of the government, special interest groups, and NUP leaders, and we will not tolerate it any longer. We believe in choice and parental rights. Sorry, I'm upset, so I'm trying to...
It's okay.
We believe that all children should have the right to an education free from mandates that have not been proven necessary or beneficial. Universal and one-size-fits-all approaches have failed Michigan schoolchildren. Children are not political pawns, and our tax dollars are not to be used to cater to the demands of special interest groups, unions, or any other political organization. As we continue to enter into this school year, parents must have a choice. Education must not be conditioned upon wearing a mask, scheduled COVID testing, or vaccination status. Our children will not be mandated to miss school for fourteen days due to close quarantine contact. Parents will be the decision-makers for the health and well-being of our children. We will no longer remain silent. We will stand up for our children and their rights. To the Penfield School Board and Administration and local government organizations that have respected parental choice, we applaud you. We anticipate and appreciate your continued support of our children and our rights as parents to do what is best for them as individuals. We do not wish to take away from the learning environment of any child. For the officials who do not support parents and our right to choose, please take note. Our voices, our votes, our tax dollars will be redirected to the schools, candidates, and businesses that support Michigan's parents and students. Calls for mandates, lockdowns, and universal masking in schools are not rooted in science and have caused significant harms to the most vulnerable in our state. We parents have made this known to you for the last year, and yet the message continues to be one of authority and cruelty disregarding the social and emotional well-being of Michigan's one point four million students. Enough of the fear, political agendas, and bad science. The fact is, after reviewing all of the studies worldwide, the CDC found that no reduction in viral transmission with the use of face masks. This is all about control and fear. Enough is enough. We are the parents. We are responsible for our children, not you, not the government. We didn't play down with you to make our children, so let us decide what's best for our children. And lastly, I'd like to note that, obviously, I'm a pro-mask parent. I don't stand against any parent that wishes to put a mask on their child. I did reach out to the board this last week and was informed we are getting air purification systems in our school. I don't know if they're similar to what Harper Creek just put in, which is called the I-Wave. It reduces ninety-nine point four percent of COVID SARS. So I guess Penfield has us coming. And I'm hoping we can get more information on it, because that's for the benefit of our children. Thank you.
Just one second. Per our policy, we normally give around ten minutes. We will not, uh, stop anyone from speaking. If anybody, there is, um, uh, comments at the end of the meeting as well. If anybody wishes to, to speak at that one, would be very much appreciated.
Nathan Everhard?
Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Nathan Everhard. I'm a Penfield resident of this community, have been for many years. I myself did not graduate from Penfield, but my brothers have. My family has and owns multiple businesses here in Penfield Charter Township. I'm here speaking because I'm less than impressed with much of the board's behavior and decisions being made by them for Penfield schools. Starting with the resignation of the former superintendent, Mr. Kevin Simmons. In the fall of twenty twenty, Mr. Simmons had a ninety-four percent approval rating. That's facts on paper, as has been previously stated. I'm curious, since then, what has changed, considering that four new ben, four new board members have joined to fill open seats during that time? If this is something personal, that shows little to no professionalism from at least some of our seated members. To back up my statement, I encourage you as Penfield citizens to do your best at attempting to catch up on what has transpired at past board meetings via the YouTube page provided for the broadcast of these meetings. That is, if you can find all of them. Many of these recorded sessions were at one point either removed and then restored, marked for private viewing, modified, and returned for public viewing, although some are still missing, with transparency again being slim to none. I pay, as well as yourselves being citizens of this township, for these folks, board members, to help, not be the sole, but to help run this public school district with the best interests of everyone involved. First and foremost, as previously stated, the best interests of our children's education, not politics and or who likes who, who's in whose back pocket. Penfield School Board of Directors, you work for us, and it is my suggestion that you start showing us that you care, although perhaps it's too late for that. Transparency is key, and that is nonexistent, or very little, from your past displayed behavior and actions. I personally feel that Mr. Simmons was bullied into a resignation by your actions, which again is unprofessional and has been documented. My hope for us as citizens is to create positive changes moving forward to learn from this rough patch, as previously stated, with our children at the forefront of our concern. We cannot do this alone, but after all, we are Panther Strong, and I'm confident that good will prevail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Jinks?
I am Carrie Jinks. I live in Springfield. I know many of you, and I want to say thank you to the members who have been upfront and honest. First and foremost, my kids do school of choice. We have been a part of Penfield for thirteen years now. We decided to do school of choice because my whole family has been in Penfield, and I have two daughters that have IEPs. Penfield is the best for their special education. I have to say, though, something needs to happen out front. A teenager was hit today. And my best friend's son, his car was hit this morning. It is terrible out there. I don't know if you guys see it. Um, if you do, parent pickup, drop off, ride the bus. It is horrible. I mean, it is so hard to get into the parking lots because the cars are so far lined up that you can't go anywhere. And more accidents are happening. So something needs to happen to keep our kids safe. Second of all, um, I wanna say that I think there was intimidation with the whole Mr. Simmons issue. He had to resign. If not, he was gonna get fired. I, I don't think it's fair. He did a lot for our children. He interacted with our kids. Our kids knew who the superintendent was. And I think it was racist. Last, I wanna say the whole mask on the bus has got to stop. My daughter rides the bus to the CACC. She comes to me after school and can barely breathe. They're killing the kids on the bus. It is so hot and without any air, anything. They shouldn't have to wear them. It should be up to them or their parents to make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Natalie Perouker?
Hi, my name is Natalie Perouker. I am a current student attending Penfield Middle School as a seventh grader. I have recently experienced some things about masks. When I was in school last year, I had to take at least three bathroom breaks a day due to not being able to breathe. And I'm not willing to wear a mask attending our school. And I play sports, and I don't want to wear a mask if I'm going to be able to. In conclusion, I'm not wearing a mask if I can't breathe. I am sure other students feel the same way, and they're not good for our health as kids. Thank you.
Stacy Wixon?
Hi, my name is Stacy Wixon, and I live on Viking Drive. Um, I'm a ninety-three graduate of Penfield. My husband is a ninety-six graduate of Penfield. We have family that, my parents, his parents, and our family have graduated from Penfield, and now I have a middle school and a Dunlap. And we do not agree with the mask either. Um, there is no reason why they should have to wear a mask. It should be a parent's choice. It should not be mandated by anyone, and I agree with the bus situation. Both of my kids do not enjoy wearing the mask on the bus. The bus is hotter than probably sitting in the classroom. So please make it the parent's choice. Thank you.
Thank you. How many do we have left, sir? How many do we have left?
Two left.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Madeline Wixon?
Hi, my name is Maddie, and I am an eighth grade student here at Penfield Middle School. Playing sports is my passion, and I enjoy doing that with my friends. I've heard rumors about mask mandates, and as an athlete, wearing a mask is not a healthy choice. You cannot expect us to wear a mask in school, especially when it's ninety degrees. You as the school board supported the community in getting us back to school, and that the mask should be the parent's choice. I want to come to school, play sports, and be with my friends without a mask. If masks are mandated, I have a feeling you will be losing a lot more students like me. Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie.
And Star Lewitzky?
Good evening. My name is Star Lewitzky, and I actually live in Lakeview School District, but I am here in support of Penfield parents who support the mask choice. I gotta say, it's refreshing to be in a district, in front of a district, who have left the decision-making in the parents' hands where it should be, in my opinion. It's very refreshing that you all have recognized that the CDC doesn't make laws. They make recommendations. They're an agency. They're not elected, and they don't make laws. So it is nice to see that recognized here. Um, my school district, we, they have mandated masks, and I can only hope that that will change and that they will follow your lead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sean said you wait till the end. Okay, thank you.
That's it? All right. Thank you, everyone. All right, we will move to five point oh one. Approval of our high school assistant principal. Mr. DeVoe, if you'd like to direct us.
So, he is not here tonight. What we thought was, what we would like to do is actually, we have a lot of new hires, so we were thinking of the next general, the, uh, board meeting that we would have an opportunity to introduce some of the new faces here at Penfield Schools.
Awesome. Awesome. Is everything set? Do you need board approval to go ahead?
Absolutely. That's, that's where we're at, and upon approval, we'll be able to have that contract ready for, for, uh, Mr. Goggins tomorrow.
So you're looking for board approval tonight?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Would you like to announce who our VP nomination is, candidate?
Absolutely. So, so we had an extensive search since, uh, Mr. Hudgens was promoted to principal at Penfield High School. And, uh, with his interview committee, they have, uh, recommended Tim Goggins of, of Delton Cowlog. He's been a social studies teacher for the past six years, uh, at their high school. And prior to that, he, uh, worked at Lighthouse Academy in a juvenile correctional educational program. So a lot of interesting experience there. And prior to that, he had, uh, experience as a, as a business owner. And, uh, so a lot of interesting experience that he has, and the team felt great about him.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you to, uh, the team for getting that done.
I'd make the motion that we, uh, offer a contract to our new, uh, prospective, uh, vice principal of the high school.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Any questions before we proceed? Whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay, start with Sarah. I will, yes, Craig?
Yes.
Dana?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, five point oh two, transportation LOA. I will once again turn to Mr. DeVoe on this very exciting news.
Yes, absolutely. So a- as mentioned ear- earlier by one of our public guests, we are down drivers at Penfield Schools. That, that is a shared issue across our state. That's been in the news as well. I'm sure you've heard about that. So we, we share in that struggle. It's been a challenge. When there's a challenge, you step up to the plate, and we've been working with the Penfield Transportation Union in providing a, a better offer for them and, and giving us a better shot at acquiring new drivers. And, and as far as the terms of that, I can speak because we're going to be capitalizing that. That's an increase to nineteen dollars and fifty cents per hour for, for all drivers. And also a sign-on bonus of one thousand four hundred for untrained drivers and two thousand dollars for trained drivers. We're very excited about that. We, we hope that helps Penfield Schools and, and we have the buses. We just need the drivers. So that's, that's what we agreed to as of today. That's been signed by, by both union and district. It just needs ratification.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Any questions? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the transportation LOA.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Craig.
I think we could all second that.
Craig?
Hi.
Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And Sarah, yes.
Trevor, I just want to thank you, sir. From the bottom of my heart, honestly. For those that don't know, this is, this has gone on for, for quite a while, trying to reach an agreement. And Trevor, I can't. Anna and Gina, you're right there. I know you had help. Honestly, everyone in the, in the front office there. This is, I got goosebumps right now. This is absolutely huge for us, guys. This is, Michelle has, has brought this to our attention and what she needs to get drivers in here, what she believes that she needs in support from the district to, to get drivers in here. Drivers that we currently have, as you heard, is, for most is two dollars an hour raise. We are, we have a bus driver in attendance, so you can, you can see the excitement. I mean, literally, my, I, I have goosebumps right now. She has asked for help to, to be able to fully, fully perform her job down there and be able to pull in drivers. And this is, this is very great. I very much appreciate your guys' work this week in getting that done. All right, that's. You got us all going!
That means a lot to our whole crew.
Five point oh three, intern superintendent interviews. We have three individuals here tonight. We have Mrs. Hoddick. Where's all my paperwork? Where'd all my stuff go? Mr. Everett and Mr. Meyer has joined us tonight. Per M A S B, we have to conduct a question and answer segment. So at this time, anyone that kind of wants to go first, if you guys would stay, Mr. DeVoe would take the other two.
Nice isolation booth.
In all, in all fairness, give us about ten minutes per, per candidate to kind of question and answer, and, and we'll move right on down the list. Mr. Everett, go first? Mr. Everett, welcome, sir. If you don't mind, can you give us a little bit of your background?
Sure. My name is Tim Everett. I do live in Penfield Schools. I worked at Penfield Schools for twenty-eight plus years as a teacher, administrator, and superintendent. I have three sons. They all graduated from Penfield Schools. And my family, my wife and I, we've lived here about thirty years. So the reason I'm here is, you know, I'm concerned. I care a lot about the district, and I know this is a difficult time for the district and for the staff and the students and the community and the parents. And I don't know how I can help. I guess I'll let you guys decide that. You have great candidates here. Any one of them could come in and help you. If it's me, that's great. If it's not me, if there's some other way that I can help, I'll be glad to help in any way I can.
Appreciate that. Anybody like to start us off?
Hi, Ken.
I guess they're all looking at you, so you're.
Welcome, Mr. Everett.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here tonight. I'll start with, what is it that attracts you to this district? Kind of want to add to some questions that we made up for everybody to kind of keep it fair and uniform, but having recently retired from the position, reasoning for coming back besides wanting to help, if there were any other motivations, and, you know, if you, if you do have, you know, the motivation to come out of retirement and, and work for a while again.
Well, it's, it's hard to be mortified more, more to come, to come out of retirement, to, to have the motivation to come out of retirement. I'm, I'm enjoying retirement. But like I said, I've been following along with what's going on at Penfield, and, you know, we've had difficult times before, so I know that people think that this is kind of a difficult time for Penfield, but we've had difficult times before with financial issues, building issues, staffing issues, all of those busing issues. We've had very difficult times. I've been a part of that in a lot of different roles. And so I have a lot of, of knowledge as far as, as the difficulty that you're going through now. You know, I, I don't know. I've, I've been kind of going back and forth how I can help the district. Like I said, I've been superintendent before. I know how difficult it can be and how rewarding it can be to help a district, to help students, to help parents, communities, staff members. It can be very rewarding. And I miss that. And I, the, the biggest thing I miss, miss about Penfield is the people. I've, I haven't been able to, you know, I haven't really, because of COVID, a lot of it, I haven't been able to come back and do a lot of things and, and volunteer a lot of time. I wanted to come back and volunteer in school, but it's been a difficult time to do that. So I miss the people and, and I'm looking forward to, in whatever way, to come back and, and reestablish some of those connections I had before.
Thank you.
Do you mind talking about the differences between being an interim superintendent and being the superintendent? And do you feel you'd have a problem with that role since you were the superintendent?
No, I've been an interim superintendent too, twice actually. So, so no, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that role. I'd just like to say that, you know, I, I would like to be here and, and I'm not going to commit beyond winter break. Not. So I think that the board is going to have to, and with, and I can help with that. I've done through superintendent searches. I'm going to have to start with superintendent search as soon as possible, with the goal hopefully to get somebody here by the first of the year. Now, when you're working with a consultant, you'll find out what the pool is. And if the pool is, is a little weak and not able to do that, you should know by November whether you can get somebody in here that fits Penfield or if you'll need to go the entire year. And if one of the other candidates is willing to commit to the entire year, maybe that's a, a, a aspect that you want to consider. I'm not saying I won't, but I, I'm saying right now that I'll commit to, to winter break and then we can kind of go from there. Now, with a consultant, you know, what I would do right away is get people in here to introduce themselves, so you can hire a consultant through this process. Dr. Corporal has been on, on a number of searches, and Dawn was on the last search too. So they know some of the process, but most of you are new to, all of you are new to that, I believe. So it's going to be important for you to get the right person that will work with you and get that superintendent you want. What they'll do is they'll poll the community, find out what they're looking for in a superintendent, the staff, the students, and they'll work with you to get a criteria of what you want as a superintendent. Then they'll be able to get a posting together with those criteria and candidates. And a lot of them have already been through searches, so they'll probably be honest with you and tell you what the pool is now, what we're looking at as far as timeline. So it's going to be very important for you to find the right person to work with you in, in searching for a superintendent. Then also, I think that you're going to want a company that's going to stay with you after the superintendent is hired and that do workshops with you and that superintendent, so you're clear on what your role is, what the superintendent's role is, and you can work some things out, including some documents in case there's a turnover in board members. You have this piece of document. This is what the board's doing. This is what the superintendent's going to do. Look at your strategic plan, and so you're, you're going to want a company that's going to stay with you. I would say at least a year to come back and say, how's it going with your superintendent? What are the problems? Let's talk about that. Let workshop that problem. So that would be my recommendation. My role as interim would to help facilitate that by getting people in here, giving you the time and, and answer any questions that I can as far as the process, and try to make sure that I'm taking care of the school business and communicating with you while you're going through that process. You have other things on your plate, but that's a big one. That's a big one for the board. It's a huge, a, a job for a board is to choose that superintendent. And I would say you get started right away. And like I said, I, my feeling is by the first of November, you should be able to know, okay, what's the pool like? Are we going to have to extend that for the year? Are we going to have to look at the end of the year? Or can we get somebody here in January first? And then you can talk. And they may know others, another interim superintendent that, that might want to come in and work that half a year, and, and if they do a good job, get, get the job. There's a lot of things that that consultant can work with you. But as Dawn and Dr. Corporal and Craig know, it's very important to find the right person to come in here and help you guide you.
Thank you. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for being here tonight. In your experience, how would you, as the interim superintendent, A, focus on student achievement? B, work with the community? And C, maintain and sustain the leadership team?
Well, I've worked with the front office. I've worked with Jerry and Trevor and Gina and Tim. And I know the two Seras as far as administration. I don't know the other administrators, but I've talked to Jerry and Trevor and Tammy and Gina, and they speak very highly of them. So the first thing I, I do would be to try to get to know my administrative staff and make sure what do they need as far as student achievement or anything else? What do they need right now, including transportation, including Dewey, including everything else? How can I help you? And what do you need? So that would be my first task, is trying to get to know their needs right now and look, look forward to what they might have needs in the next few, few months. I think that our teaching staff and our administrative staff are doing, I hope, and I, and I certainly would find out whether they're doing a good job as far as the testing. You know, I have to come up to speed on where the state is on testing and those types of things, but mostly, I think what I want to do is support our administrators and our teaching staff and making sure that they have all the materials that they need. I can't remember. What was the other part of your question? So you had a free part of that.
The last part was just maintaining and sustaining the leadership.
Yeah, I think, you know, my, I use board docs a lot for communication. I communicate a lot with my board through those, and, and those are public. I know there's some concerns of making sure that things are public, so. As far as, as communication with the board, I communicated a lot through board docs, email. I talked to board regularly, making sure that they were up to speed on what is going on in the district. You know, I always ran a meeting, the board meetings, with, I didn't like surprises. So I always, the Wednesday before the board meeting, I would have board docs filled out and the agenda all set with all documents on board docs for people to look at. They're public unless they're private because of student discipline or something that is, we can't hold private. They'd all be private. So I would have that done on Wednesday, and then the board had time to look through it and send me questions or ask me or call me or whatever and say, you know, I don't understand this, you know? And then I could respond to the whole board saying, this is what this is about. So when you come to the board meeting, you have all the information you need to make decisions. That's not mean that some things didn't come up. There, there were a few things that came up. But for the most part, you had the data you need to make sound decisions, and they were public. So if somebody wanted to come in and say, I see you're talking about transportation tonight, and this is my opinion on what you're going to be discussing in board meeting tonight, they could do that in that, in that open forum, so it was public, so you could do that. So I always tried to make sure that our board meetings, you guys had all the information prior to the meeting and that it was public, and so that when you're coming in here and discussing and making decisions, it wasn't like I'm throwing something brand new or something else is, is being brand new. You know, sometimes things came up, but for the most part, I think we, we knew before the board meeting what, what the agenda was.
Thank you.
You led right into my question.
Okay.
How could you help the board be more prepared? And I think one of the superintendent directives that we just went through last month, superintendent will be with more board members at least once a month. I think, I think you just kind of went over that and want to make you say the same thing, but the, to be able to help us be more prepared.
I didn't meet regularly with board. I, I have no problem meeting. I, I'll meet with anybody anytime. My criteria for meeting as superintendent, because our time is valued, is what are we meeting about? And what is going to, what is the resolution you want from that meeting? So I'm not necessarily in favor of meeting just for meeting's sake. I, I want to meet, if, if you have an issue that you want to bring to me and you can't do it either by email or calling me or whatever, and you need to see me, I, I am, I'm good with that. Or if you just want to see what's going on and some things, I'm all for that. I, I have no problem with that. But I, you know, I, I wouldn't want to set up meetings just because, okay, this is your time to meet, so for, you have to come in and meet, we have to come in. If there's a need, then I think I'm, I'm more than happy to meet with anybody. But I, my criteria is always, you know, what's it about and what do you want to come out of this meeting? So what kind of solutions can I have? That's included parents, teachers, and I'm glad to meet with you. What's it about and what would you like? Sometimes they just say, I just want to kind of let you know. Great, come in, let me know, and, and we can go from there. So, yeah, I think when, when I was superintendent, like I said, I tried to, and I'd go to my administrators and I'd say, if you think I'm going to hear about it, either it's going to be on Facebook or somebody's going to call me or think, let me know prior. So I had a heads up. And for the most part, they did a good job. And I did that with the board. If I thought, okay, they're going to hear about this, you know, I would try to notify you and make sure that you were aware of something that was going on in the district. So that was kind of how I handled that.
I appreciate it. I just have to point out one thing. You did send an email, just to be clear. You did send an email to, to the board. You have covered everything that you had stated in that email. Just to be clear, and it sounds like we're, we can make it happen, but you would be taking Fridays off?
I would take, I would work four days a week. I'd take Fridays off.
Okay.
I, I babysit my granddaughter on Friday, and that's. I'm not, I'm not taking. But I've talked to Trevor and Gina and Tammy and Jerry, and I don't think that that's going to be a problem. If it is, you know, you certainly have other candidates if that's a stumbling issue. The only other thing I didn't mention is we do have a, a week planned in October for vacation. Right now, we're up in the air because of all the travel things, but my wife has a week off and we had planned to do something at that time, so I still plan to do that. And that's not unusual. When I was superintendent, I might have days off. I might have been at a conference for a few days. And I always told Trevor and Jerry and I told all my administrators, I'd say, look, I'm going to be gone these three days. If there's an emergency, you can call me, but, and they were pretty good about making sure it didn't happen.
Great, thank you.
What would you need from the school board to ensure your success in the role of interim superintendent?
Well, I think, I think your support, obviously. I think, I would like to get to know, I know that there's issues, obviously, with some of the things. I haven't watched all the board meetings, so I'm probably not in tune to everything that has been going on here. So I probably would need to be updated on at least some of the things that the community is having issues with. Because there's certain things I think the board's going to have to do. And you've got a tough work to do in this half a year that I'm going to be here, if not longer. Number one, we're still in a pandemic and we still have COVID. I've talked to Jerry, I've talked to Trevor, I've talked to Tammy and I've talked to Dewey occasionally and Gina. You know, they feel that whatever happens, because they've been through it. When the pandemic first heard, happened, I think that everybody was kind of running around trying to figure out what to do. But I think they have a good idea if it got worse and things had to happen that they have in place. And administrators, and they speak very strongly in administrators, things in place. If board would make a decision on masks or going into remote learning or any of those types of things, that they could put that in place quickly. And I'm not suggesting that you do that, but I think that would, that's on your table, it's on your plate. My job would be to make sure that I communicate clearly what's going on in the district as far as our students, staff, getting sick, what's our policy for that? What are we doing to that, your policy for that? How is it working? I think I communicate from the calhoun as far as what their policy is and if there's any changes, what recommendations. So it would be instructional. I would make sure that you have all the knowledge to make decisions that you need to make. That would be part, and I would give you my opinion on that decision. Legal policies, if Truman comes out with something that they feel that district should be doing, it's important for me to get that to the board and make sure they have clear understanding. Neola, which does our, a lot of our work for us as far as our policies. It would be important for me if they have changes, recommendations, that I communicate with you and give you advice of what that's about and give you advice of moving forward. So that's the first thing. The second, as we talked about, you have a bond here. It's an important bond. The board is very important to end that bond. I'm assuming you approved the language that is on the ballot. So you should be knowledgeable of that language and what the bond is all about. If you're not, you need to get up to speed and that would be my job to make sure that you have all the knowledge that you can answer questions on what we're doing in this bond. What improvements we're making, what, any tax increase, which is zero, I believe. So you, I would have to get up to speed and you would have to get up to speed because you are a voice to the community of what this bond is. And they need to clearly know and understand before November what they're voting for. I've been involved with quite a few bonds and successful ones, the boards have taken leadership and owned this bond and said, and has gone out and made sure that people understood it. So that's on your plate too. And then the superintendent search is on your plate too. And I can support you with that. I've been through that a number of times, but that's another important. That's probably one of the most important roles of a board is to choose the next leader or the leadership in the district. So my role would be to try to support you and also make sure that the daily activities of the school district are going on and functioning and kids are safe and eating, the transportation is good and meals and sports and all that. Try to make sure that that's all going well. And if there's issues, come back to you and let you know what those issues are and what I need from you.
Okay, you kind of answered what I was going to ask in this next question and parts of your other one, but to just kind of narrow it down to a priority list. What would be your action plan or goal for the first month in this position? And then what about the months beyond that until January or past weekend?
My goals? I would say come up to, well, the first thing is to introduce myself and make sure that I know the staff that I'm working with. I know, except for the principals at high school, middle school and Dunlop, I know everybody else. I know Michelle at the bus because she's been a driver for quite a while, so I've known her in that capacity. So it would be going out to the buildings, making sure they know who I am, making sure they know what will I have. And then, and making sure that they have the things they need to continue and how can I help them would be my first thing. I probably want to go to staff meetings. I know that they can be full, but I would want to make sure. There's probably staff that don't know me and there's staff that do, so I want to introduce myself at the staff meetings. I'd also want to make sure that they understand about the bond and what's coming on, so they have a clear understanding of that. And so that would be something I'd do quickly. I think the bond is important. I would want to meet with your construction manager, your committees. I know we have at least one committee person here. So I want, I would want to meet with them, get up to speed where they're at, what they're doing, what they need from me, what they need from the district, how can I help? So that would be something that I'd want to do. And then I would schedule consulting firms to come in and talk to you about search for a new superintendent, so that you have a clear understanding of what that's about. And if you see someone or a company that you like, that you can go ahead and hire them and start working with them, the superintendent search, so. That's a lot on my plate. I don't know if I change my office job. Maybe, I do, I'm kidding.
Trevor, thank you for coming into this meeting. I guess I had a basic question about whether or not when you look at accountability for NWEA scores and for science scores versus, and for that matter, accountability for us trying to show a good base toward the community in terms of reassuring them that the bond funds will be effectively spent. Do you have any thoughts about having any kind of meet and greets with the community and sharing with them more specifics about what the bond proposal implementation would look like?
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea. And I think it's a great idea for you guys too, to do some of that too and be involved with that and meet and greets. But yeah, absolutely. I think it would be important. I think it's going to be important for the board to repair, obviously, with the community. And I think that transparency is going to be key. We can look at your policies as far as filming board meetings, all those other things. I can work with you on all that. And, yeah, I think meet and greets for the bond and so people, parents can get to know me. They may not know who I am. We have a lot of new parents here. I've been retired since 2019, so we probably have some parents that don't know me. And I'd be glad to make sure that I reach out to them. I, as a superintendent, I usually went to all the events. In fact, probably, that's probably where many of you know me, whether it's sporting or visual arts or open houses, which are probably over by now, but parent teacher conferences. I usually try to show up at buildings and be there. And usually I'd get parents that would come up with either with a concern or want to talk to me about something, so.
Thank you. Any questions for us?
Well, first of all, thank you for what you're doing. I know how difficult it is to be on a board. I've worked with a lot of boards. And like I said, this is a difficult time. We've had difficult times before and we'll get through this as a district. And if I can help in any way, I'll be glad to. I'm not looking necessarily for a job, but if that's what you think would be most helpful to the district, I'll be glad to do that. If you get somebody else and they have questions and they want some help with that, I'm open to helping anybody I know. I've been contacted by a couple of the bond committees about stuff. And so I'll be glad to help in any way I can.
I appreciate it.
All right.
Anyone have anything else? So you're more than welcome to stay and hang out or we can?
Oh, I know, I'll go and then I'll come back or I'll stay until I have your decision. But I don't want to sit in front of somebody else.
Fair enough.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Front and center. Mrs. Hoddick, welcome. If you could start off, give us a little bit about your background and?
Sure. So I'm Jane Hoddick. I just retired from Penfield Schools last year after about thirteen, fourteen years, fifteen years totally in the district. Prior to that, I was an elementary teacher in Battle Creek Public Schools for twelve years. And then I went to Marshall for a year. Then I was the elementary principal in Bellevue for quite a few years, five and a half. But I wasn't just the elementary principal, I was also the curriculum director for the district, the title one director for the district, the special ed implementer for the district, the testing coordinator for the district. I could keep going, lots of hats. Then came over to Penfield and taught two years at North Penn, third grade, and then became principal at Perry.
Thank you, ma'am. We have some questions. If we could make sure we ask the same question and we'll go right on the list, right on the line.
All right. Jane, thanks for being here tonight. My question is, what is it that attracts you to our school district? And what do you think makes you the right choice for this position?
So I live in the Penfield School District. I bought my home in the Penfield School District in order to have my children go to Penfield Schools. So we've lived in the community for thirty plus, almost thirty years, twenty-nine years. And our children went through the school system and graduated from Penfield in '09 and in 2012. And I taught here, like I said, was an administrator here and a parent and active in all of the organizations. Our children were involved in band, in sports, you name it. And it's a place that I want to be, it's a place that I want to stay. We haven't moved yet, even though I retired. And I know that the public persona right now of Penfield is hurt. It needs a mandate, it needs some help. And I have a passion for Penfield, I want what's best for the district. Therefore, if it causes me to come out from my rocking chair in retirement, then I will do that just to help our district. I think we need somebody that's going to come in that knows the district. People know me, that my detractors and my supporters will always say that I'm fair. They won't always like my decisions. They will know that I will also treat them with respect before, during and after those decisions. So I'm not opposed to that. And I know that there's going to be some tough decisions made. I am not the person that technically wants to have this position forever, as of right now, as of this day. I think we need somebody that can come in and help us get back on our feet. You know, who knows what the future will bring, but that's what brings me here today.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
What are the key differences between being an interim superintendent and being the full-time permanent superintendent?
An interim superintendent, I believe, is here, you run the day-to-day. You're going to be asked to make some decisions that will affect the future. You will be asked to manage the district just like you would be a superintendent for the long haul. But you're also here to help support all of the systems, the administration, the students, the parents. We are here for the kids. That is our sole mission, is here for children and their education. And I think as superintendent, it stops with you. You're the connection between the Board of Education and those people. And that is something that needs to be maintained. I believe that's an interim's job. Superintendent's position is more long-term. You may be working more on long-term initiatives, like we were talking about. The bond obviously is coming up in November, so that would be something an interim would be working with. You also, with a superintendent, are long-term, your strategic planning, where you're doing three to five, six, seven, eight years, some of those long-term things. And again, interim is here to help. And right or wrong, I see my position as a patch right now to help. Get us, we need to make ourselves known as one of the best districts in the area again. In order to do that, we've got to show the community that the superintendent and the board can work together. And we need to make ourselves lively and ready for another superintendent that's going to come in and want to do that long-term job. Otherwise, nobody's going to want to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. My question is, in your experience, how would you as interim? A, focus on our students' achievements? B, work with the community? And C, maintain and sustain the leadership team?
So the first with the academics, being an elementary principal and a former curriculum director, my, that's one of my solid strengths, is working with the academics and making sure that our administrative team and our teachers have what they need to help our students become successful, to help support them through that, to work with our curriculum director and so on, to make sure that we're, you know, doing what we need to, making sure our scores are where they need to be too. And what do they need to make them better, so that we are a place that students want to come to? Secondly, with the administrative team, I don't know if that was second or not, but with the administrative team, I mean, being, I just sound funny, but living there and being one of those, just knowing that you're supported and knowing that you have somebody that has your back. We're all human, we're going to make a mistake and the administrative team is going to make some mistakes. They're going to, we're also going to celebrate with them though. So I've got to see, what, again, what do they need to do their job? What can I do to help to make sure that they can help their teachers and their students? Third one is community. How are we going to, how am I going to help with the community? I am a community person, I'm out, I'm out in the community. I'm attending events, going to all of the Penfield events, not just Penfield events, those sports and choir and band and all those good things, but being in the Penfield community. Up at Family Fair, seeing everybody, over at Meyer, seeing everyone, and so on and so forth. And I also have some connections within the area that where I'm currently working. So currently, I work at Rhino's Plumbing and HVAC as the office assistant. Off that, answer the phone, great. And I also work at Western Michigan University as a clinical instructor. And I manage six interns in two different districts this semester. And just so you know, if I were to get this position, I have coverage for both of those.
Thank you. How would you advise to help prepare the board and inform the board to be ready for a meeting? How would you advise to help prepare the board and inform the board to be ready for a meeting?
I would have to first see what's in place. I would have to then see what is working for both sides of the agenda. Right now, my feeling is, we have the board and we have the school district and the administrative and the teaching staff. I think it's important to figure out a routine that works to get us all together. I think it's important to meet with board members individually and with the board president, at minimum, in the week before, but keeping everyone informed. You know, beat the bad news home. If there's something that has happened, I need to make sure that you folks know because you're a face in the community. And the community is going to be coming to you with their concerns. So it's important that you get to know what has really happened and then we can work from there. But I definitely think that communication is key and I expect it the other direction as well. It needs to happen that way and the trust needs to be built between the superintendent and the Board of Education again.
Thank you, ma'am.
What do you need from the school board to ensure your success in the role of interim superintendent?
That's it. Trust and communication, I guess. And we could go on and on, but I think what is lacking right now and what this district needs is faith again in us and that is from trust and communication, transparency, if you will. Heard that a lot and that is true, transparency as well.
What would be your action plan or goals for the first month as interim? And then what about five months after that?
Well, I would think, I'm going to go longer to short, but I would hope by five months that we would have a superintendent in place. That we, hopefully before that, in the meantime, the first month, I wouldn't even go that far, the first few weeks, we all need to have conversations. The superintendent, individual board members need to have conversations. We need to start that trust relationship and we need to make sure that we're on the same page. I think we are. I think it's getting buried. I think all of you had great intentions when you took this role. I wouldn't want to be a board member. However, it's getting muddled and y'all know that. So what are we going to do to fix that? So I would spend the first two to three, four weeks, obviously, just building that trust, finding out what you need, what to help with your role, what do you need from me? And then I'm going to go the other direction. I'm going to start supporting our administrative team. I've been there, done that. I know what it's like to be left without that support. And I know what it's like to have that support. And I would not want to be an administrator without that support. So definitely would be supporting the administrative team and getting out in the buildings, getting out every single day, being visible. I'm a servant leader. Anybody that knows me knows that. I'm a servant leader. That means I would not ask anybody in the district to do anything that I wouldn't do. So that's what it is. And that's going to happen the first couple of weeks to a month, I think, if not longer. Hopefully, you get somebody hired by then.
Thank you for coming out this evening, Mrs. Hoddick. So one of the things that I think we know about both you and Mr. Everett is that you've always been accountable regarding student achievement and of course, especially since you are in charge of a building. And so my question for you is, as we're attempting to pass the bond in the next few months, how would you make an effort to interact with the community so that we can show that we're going to be accountable for spending their hard-earned tax dollars effectively?
So if I heard you right, what I heard was you want to know how I'm going to be visible in the community and try to make the connection between the community and the board? A lot of, I've seen a lot of experiences that superintendents have tried to do with having moments to meet and greet and eat and celebrate and all of those good things. I certainly wouldn't be opposed to that. But one of the biggest things that I see needs, as I've mentioned, is just right here. We have more community members than ever that have come to a board meeting. Thank you and thank you for speaking up. They also need to see that this person, whoever's in that role, is working with the board and the board is working with that superintendent. That starts at board meetings because that's where we're most visible. And then it goes on from there, where they see us having celebrations together and they see us high-fiving, they see us interacting, and they see you interacting with the buildings and the staff and the students. I think that's critical.
So then would you say, so I guess I have to ask a follow-up here. So do you then think of yourself as being, as the service, as servant leader and it's also the person that would be going out to the community in order to promote the bond?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. The bond is invariably important. We haven't passed it two times now. If we don't pass it this time, it's going to be a long time before we're going to be able to pass this bond. I've worked on almost every bond in the last twenty years. I could read verbatim what is in each one of them. And for whatever reason, the message hasn't gotten to the right people. We need people to get out and vote. Right now, we need to make sure that they're going to vote yes, to come out and vote. So it would, I would be spending time looking into that and what do we need to do to get out into the community? Which avenues do we need to take? And talk to different people and see what that looks like. What does the data show? What has it shown in the past? Where did we fall off? What are some things we need to do? And so that would determine how I go out in the community.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything else? Do you have any questions for us?
I do, I do. So I know that, you know, like I've said, all of you took this position because you wanted to be here and you wanted to help Penfield. Penfield's in your heart, I get that. But that impression is strained. What do you all see is your role into helping fixing that image and showing that things can change? For the back.
Well, first of all, I'm going to get really emotional because I agree. No one does this for the pot. We do it for the kids. We get a tiny little stipend. And we're not always all going to agree, but we don't have to act like children over our disagreements on both sides. I will support, as I have any interim superintendent or administrator in any way that I can. I love Penfield too. And bleeding green is critical in all of these positions. Working together for unity in our community. Penfield Township's very unique because we don't, this is what we have in our township. We have our school. You know, we have the Shell Station, we have the Township Office. But we have families and those families are very, very critical to all of us. And so I will say that I will just support. I'm here to listen. Many of you have reached out to me. And I will work and do what I can do to help Penfield continue to grow.
Very nice. Does anyone else want to speak to that?
I'll speak to it. I completely agree with Dawn. I've always been very active in this community. Didn't matter what my kids were, where they were, what level. Was it North Penn? I was very active for five years on that PTO. Was it Delma? Very active for fires in that PTO. My kid decided he wanted to do junior football. I was very active on that board. We tried to figure out ways to make money. Me and co-chair decided to put together an organization called Panthers Funding Panthers to raise money for clubs and organizations that didn't have funds. And we put on a mom-to-mom sale for many years. I love this community. I love, I love the kids. I love watching kids succeed and watching kids be everything they can be. And my kids are third generation in this district. And I want to see us be what I know we can be. I went to Mr. Larson's memorial and there were so many old-school Penfield. And it warms my heart listening to stories and people coming up to me, old superintendent's wives and old administrators and old board members. And come on Dana, you can do this. Make Penfield the way it was when you were in school. You can do this and it's a community and we can do this together. And I know that you can lead it. I know you can do this. And that is my goal, to make this the community that I know that we can and we can work together and just push away the hate and remember that it doesn't matter what side of the fence you are on. We're all part of the same community and we need to remember that. And that's what I want to remind everyone and that's what I want to do.
Very nice.
I think I'd like, we had a great suggestion earlier about putting the board meeting online in a very easy place to find, where it could always be referenced with a lot of the material that we receive, like tonight for people talking. So I'd like to find a third party that could help us with that and with the new interim superintendent so that we could work together and figure out, you know, a lot of times it's just left-hand, right-hand kind of thing where, you know, maybe the videos get sent to one spot, but then somebody else picks that up to put it online. And if that doesn't happen, just as an example. So I'd like to work with a third party for that. But I'd also like to work with the third party in the interim to, the community wants to know what happened with Mr. Simmons. And obviously, we have legal challenges to where we can't just say. But I think I'd like to work with a third party in a very respectful way to Mr. Simmons to let the community's asking what happened. And I think they're owed an explanation.
Yeah, I agree with Tim on that completely and that that's very difficult. You know, everyone wants to trust the board up here. When you can't tell people things, how are they going to trust you? There's a lot of people in this room that, you know, maybe know each other, but maybe we don't know each other well enough yet to understand that we're not hiding things, we're not trying to do bad things. We're just, we're trying to do our jobs as a school board members to the best of our ability for all of you people and all your kids. That's why I'm here.
That's why I'm here. I wasn't going to... This last eight months has probably been the funnest, but yeah, most trying time probably of my life. I agree with my fellow board members. It is, it is very trying right now. We are in an obligation. We are being directed on what we can say and what we can't say. This is absolutely one of the hardest times of my life. I would like to thank the people and my wife that I've reached out to to see, to see the hatred is absolutely unbelievable and I can't say anything about it. For what people openly say that don't even know me and don't know, it... Alls I can say is continue to ask questions. We are able to answer questions. Continue to ask questions. I've encouraged people to ask questions. We are able to answer questions. We are in an obligation right now and no, at this point in time, I've been advised not to give a statement. I'm sorry. I'm sorry for knowing that I sit here and the first thing comes to my mind is my own kid walks through the school, guys. Grandkid, kid, 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 kid. I'm heartbroken, guys. I'm not going to BS about it. The stuff that is accused is said is absolutely unbelievable. Do you want to, you want to show this to our children? Ask questions. Ask the board questions. Some have. Some have asked questions. I've replied to that person, including the entire board, of what I replied. Guys, I'm not here for the heck of it. I promise you that. I promise you that. My email is wolfersburgerj@penfield.net. Please send me an email and ask a question. I promise you, we are all here together of the best interest of our students, of our staff, of our district, and absolutely our bond committee.
I'll just add that, you know, we, they say that you are judged by others by your actions, but you judge yourself by your intentions. And we've seen some actions that aren't lovely. But I believe, and when we get down to it, everybody in this room, everybody in the whole community has the best intentions and that's to do what's best for our kids. It really breaks my heart for people to say things like they're not going to vote for the bond because of the actions of the board. You can hate us, but that doesn't punish us. That punishes the kids in our district. And there are some things on that bond that need to be done, the air units. We had to have half-days of school because it was too hot in our buildings. That can be fixed with the bond. So let's just keep that common goal of what's best for our kids. We're going to do our best to make things better and do things better. This goal has a very steep learning curve and we're doing our best and trying hard. And we ask that you just give us grace and work with us.
It would be great, Jane, if we had the opportunity to have you as MNSB representative and as the board, if we had to do, start doing a retreat and which we'd start looking at what our priorities are again and areas where we can sort of improve. And I think that would be an awesome way for us to work with you and to start looking forward.
And that was my exact thought, especially when Tim or Brad was talking. I could just picture us all on high ropes out at the Outdoor Education Center. We'd just hang around out there, do our little retreat. That's how we start. That's, that's how we, give me crying now, darn it, stop it. That's how we start is right there.
Yeah.
No, I don't either. Why didn't I, I don't know what that word is.
Any more questions?
I promise I don't want to go so deep. So we talked about that. What's the timeline you have for the next, for hiring for your superintendent? When do you expect to go out there and start the hunt? And what are you expecting of an interim superintendent as far as timeline?
I would look to our two that have been through this. I don't know how fast we could necessarily make this process and alone rush into a decision that we may not want to make so fast. So I don't know what the...
I think the important thing is, you know, we did work with a third party in the past. So definitely with the newness of our board, we would need that guidance. And I would think that we would start that process ASAP. And they set that timeline for us and they move it pretty swiftly.
Yeah, and you're right, that organization, there's many out there. So we'd have to decide which one that we picked that would give us what we need and what we know we need here in Penfield. I guess the last thing I'm going to say is the other two candidates are way more qualified than I am to take this position. Tim being a former superintendent and you'll meet Don Myers who, and both of these, I'm going to tell a little secret, but I've known Tim since he student-taught. I was teaching, he student-taught. And Don Meyer, I worked with side-by-side as an elementary principal. I know that he has been a superintendent and so on. So you cannot go wrong with either one of those. They have way more experience than me. And I will not be heartbroken if you say, no, Jane, see, you left once, you... And I will not be heartbroken if you say, no Jane, see, you left once, you're gone. That's okay. But I also know, I can do this. We can do this. Got anything else for me?
Janet, I'm sorry. I just want to thank you very much for, for stepping up to be here. And your utmost valued support of Penfield.
Always, always.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Hey Jeff, you want to take it five, 10 minutes?
Oh, fuck.
I wouldn't mind going restroom.
We're going to do the last one and then do a five minute.
Yeah, I could go restroom. You want to call him?
We're going to take a five minute recess for the board. We got to stop the live feed, right?
Uh, my apologies. I call this meeting back to order. Uh, Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for inviting me.
If you could, sir, could you give us a little bit of your, your background, your history?
Sure. Started at Harper Creek a long time ago as a teacher. Taught science, eighth grade science most of the time. I taught a little seventh and some high school. Got laid off, went down to Florida, taught some high school down there. Did a lot of coaching for Harper and, you know, I did coaching down there, wrestling and football. Came back, came back and worked in middle school. That, that's my love is the middle school. I, I, eighth grade is a lot of fun. And then retired and I actually went to a small school up north called Vestaburg. As a high school principal and ended up being superintendent there for six years. Retired from there, came back, went and decided I needed to get back to the district that gave me my start. And so I had been on the school board for now 11 years, going on 12 for here real quick. So I've been in your seat. Haven't been president. I don't want to be president ever. Anyway, that's kind of a quick synopsis. I haven't given up, you know, having my hands in education on part of M A S A, Michigan Associated School Superintendent's. And I was a coach for quite a few years for superintendents. And would really like to help you out. I know, help you develop a team aspect. You know, there's seven of you, but there's actually eight person team when you start working with the superintendent. And I want to help you get the right superintendent here. This is a great school district, has a lot of potential. And you just got to get the right person here. And you guys got to come together as a team. And I, I think I can help you do that.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for being here. We'll move right down the line.
Hello, Mr. Meyer. It's a pleasure being here tonight. Thank you for coming. You've kind of answered some of the questions that I had for you. But what attracted you to our district was there something more than what you already stated? And, and also what makes you think you're the right person for this position?
I got called. What name was it done? Who's this? What school district? Yeah, when I heard that you needed help, that's what I want to do. That's what attracted me. This attracted me tonight. You've got some issues that, you know, I'd love to help you, you know, work through these. And then, you know, kind of change the opinion of, of your community that was here. And I'd be glad to help out. I, I think I could really help out because my background, working with. I probably voted for me to be a director. Maybe you didn't vote for me. To be a director of M A S B. And I, you know, I'm constantly working, learning more and more. I think it's really important for you to be part of M A S B. Because you're going to be looking for superintendent. And I think, you know, you have the potential of getting a real class superintendent and working for you. And you just got to find the way to do that. And I think I can help you without getting there. So I overtalked that, I think. Any, any part, anything else?
No, I appreciate your answer. Just a little looking for.
I hate standing behind one of these.
I do.
Hello. I kind of want to just touch a little bit on what Mr. Candel was asking. So it sounds like you stay very current in the M A S B?
Absolutely.
Okay. And, and how do you feel that would help us in our new superintendent search?
Well, first of all, I think you've got to get somebody with experience. I think that's the start. And I think I could help you through M A S B and M A S A. I helped Harper Creek get there as I went up and actually recruited a couple of people that I knew who thought, I thought were good candidates. I can still do that with your help. I think, you know, you've got to look at, it's very important to go through that process. And, you know, you've got to find the right fit. I know there's a lot of, you know, we looked at different terms that you have here. But it's going to, you know, you can increase those terms, which you probably don't want. But you need to have, you know, that standard and set that standard ahead of time. I tell people, I tell superintendents when I work with them, look at your, when you apply for a job, you're actually, they're interviewing you if they're interested, but you're also interviewing them. And that's all that process. Get that right person. I don't care if it's M A S B, whatever group it is that you finally decide to go with to lead you in the right direction. I, I, we saw that real big when we had, had to replace our superintendent. And we, we got a great superintendent now. Is he perfect? No. No, none, none of us are. We're only as good as our last decision in most cases. And especially in the small districts. Don't look past because this person's been in a small district. They've been in a, in a small district. They've been doing everything in that district. They have a good knowledge of that big picture that superintendents really need. And sometimes if you hire somebody that's been just, you know, in second, you know, assistant superintendent of something, they don't get that full picture. So I think it's really important that you look at, open it up. Now, how long does that going to take? It might be, you might come up with somebody here in the next four weeks. All of a sudden it's that right person. Or it could be two years. But you got to find the right one and not settle. You've got too good a school district to settle.
Thank you.
And I overtalked then.
No, you're fine. And thank you for being here and being so patient and waiting through all of those. In your experience, how would you, as an interim superintendent, A, focus on our student, student achievement? We don't want to lose that amongst all the other things going on. Work with the community and C, maintain and sustain the leadership team.
Okay. Professional learning communities, got a lot of experience in that. I think that's one way, that's one way that's been proven as effective for student achievement. It really doesn't matter, you know, we're not here to tell each teacher, this is how you teach. We're not here to do that. I'm not here to do that. But we, I would have to look at, what are their results? What are they getting? They might be lecturing. You know, they might be a boring lecturer as you think, but their results is a lot better than the people that are doing it in a different way. So we got to look at, how do the teachers, how well do they do? How well do their students do? I think that's a really important piece. That would be probably the main way. I don't know what you have going, what kind of school improvement you're looking at when you're looking at staff. But that, that's my, one of my strengths. Another strength is curriculum. I've been, done everything. I had taught seventh grade, eighth grade. I even did a long-term sub at second grade. I thought I had to go about two weeks before they, you know, and I kept telling myself, fake it to you, mate. You know, and things were second grades and I, you know, I love them dearly. Everybody in college, they're the worst kids in the place. But man, they were fun. And I've done that. I've done high school. I taught high school. Both here in this state and down in Florida. And I've also taught college. I hate to talk, teaching college. You know, they just want to sit and get, sorry. But I just don't like to talk, you know? And I taught biology and 101. What I did enjoy teaching was the nurses who had to make up. They didn't have the science background as the 99 classes. That was fun. Because they really wanted it. 101 was kind of sitting back and, oh, okay, he's boring. Yeah, I am. But anyway. So leadership, I think it's important about the team. I would work posts with Jeff, try and get set up, see what we could do. He, he's your president. That's who I would make the communication with. I think it's important that we, I have the communication steps that should be. I mean, if you're not sending people to, you know, that come to you and complain and have a problem, you're not sending them back to the people that they have a problem with, you're going to end up solving a lot of problems. I had one situation where my president, he gets, he says, I get phone calls all night. And I said, well, what are you telling these people? Then I'm telling them that I can solve. They're not telling them that I can solve this. Well, yeah, you're going to get phone calls all night when you're telling people that. You move them back, you ask them, have you talked to the teacher? Have you talked to the principal? You know, go through those steps, I think that's really important. So that's part of my leadership. Also, you know, the shapes, I'm not always saying yes and no. I got this thing, this permanent, these ticks, that's why I like masks, nobody can see. So, anyway, that's the way, one of the leadership styles I do, I think is important.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that rolls right into my question of, how would you help prepare the board in preparation for a meeting?
Well, I don't know a way to do it now, but I think what is important is I sit down with Jeff and say, okay, and we look at what happened a year ago at the same time, and then we start setting the agenda for that meeting. Then it'd be just responsibility to get out to the rest of you, is there anything that you need to add? I don't know how you do it now. But I think that's the way to do it. And get communication between everybody, and it goes through Jeff, then to me. I think that's what's really important.
Thank you.
What would you need from the school board to ensure your success in the role of interim superintendent?
Teamwork, teamwork, number one. I mean, we have, you have some issues, I've been on that side too, where, you know, you get hammered pretty good. But teamwork is probably most important. Set that up, get people working together, finding out what the different issues are that we can work on as a board. And just, you know, being here, being visible is an important part of this.
Thank you.
Okay, what would be your action plan or goals for the first month as interim, and then what about the months beyond that?
Okay, since I really came prepared. My, you know, first month, I got to sit down and work through, just getting to know people. I don't think I made with anybody individually, but I'm just getting to know how you perform, what are your, what are your things that are important to this board? Because you know, you can have policies, I don't know who wrote your policies, who wrote your policies?
Niola.
Niola, okay. There was some issues about your policies. I think I worked through what I heard tonight and tried to give a handle on what's going on there. Getting out into the district, meeting the staff. I'd have to spend a lot of time that first month, just going, you know, and just in talking to people, talking to parents as they come in and pick, you know, students up. I heard there was a problem with the drive there. And we've seen that, I've seen that at the district I was superintendent in, I saw it at Harper Creek. Everybody has this problem because there's more people driving their students in. And so just looking, standing up and watching for the first month, okay, what can we do to solve this problem, make people safer? You know, so, you know, I've done, I've also done a crossing guard at Riverside. I've been lunch lady for a while too. I've done that. And just helping the students out, I think, is really important. And getting that flow, maybe somebody with new eyes can see. If you tried this, just something simple.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Meyer, thank you for coming out this evening. I appreciate your sharing, having your insights, it's really important to us, I think, input for the community. And my topic is generally about accountability, but I have asked the question a different way, I think. Because N W E A and other testing informs parents and informs the community, I think, pretty straightforward. I think one of the things that we want to do is, it would be to try to show the community that we want to be accountable and will lead up to, and of course after. So how would you work to, with the community in terms of showing what our intentions are and what way we can show that we're going to be accountable for how we spend their tax paid dollars?
I think one is set some goals. I don't know what keeps set your goals or not for the board. You know, that can be very specific, that you're going to work on every board meeting, you're going to work on something, maybe a student achievement. And you want reports on student achievement kind of thing. So that's a first. I think you need to show the community that you are accountable, you're working towards something. And it's what the board decides, it's not necessarily what I decide, I might get suggestions out. From there, then my accountability, you come to me and say, all right, Don, we want you to do this. Okay? And then you let me do what I need to do. You're, I'm the person that keeps the business going, you're the oversight, you're up here above everybody, and you're looking down, but you are not looking at how to do things. I come back and tell you, okay, this is the way I think you should be doing this to achieve this goal. Then from there, you know, I work with the principals, and they move it on down as we're working through that. If that's our goal, student achievement. But have you decided any goals, any goals for the board?
We do not currently have board goals, we attempted that in March, April. And amongst other things have been pushed to the wayside.
Yeah, I understand that, because it's pretty tough times right now. You know, everybody, nobody knows what's right to do, mask, no mask, those kind of things, you know. We're doing, you know, what we can, doing what's best for our students with what we've got. But I think it's still important to set down some goals that you really want to achieve for this year. And that's part of the accountability. Now, my accountability is, you're not, you're going to work on, you know, am I doing the job? Am I finding, doing what I need to do so that your goals get achieved? So that's all part of it, and I've lost.
You're fine.
We do have goals that are in our strategic plan.
Okay.
But we have asked to get a workshop together, and we have been working on accomplishing that, it just has not happened.
It's really hard because everybody's busy.
She's very busy.
Yeah.
I took on the task originally, and Dana's recently taken on that task. We had some situations, we needed all board members to be there, and we couldn't have that there at the beginning. So it's, I didn't mean to say it has fallen to the wayside, it's, we're still in progress, it's just we were hoping to have that done a long time ago.
And it's easy to forget about, push them aside, and we tend to do that as board members. You know, I do it at, you know, we, you know, but we should be talking, every, every time you have a meeting, there's something, okay, what did we do towards our goal? What did we accomplish? I, you know, that's just important.
I thank you, sir. I thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
What's your plans? I mean, are you looking at getting M A S B coming in and helping you work with as a team?
Are you addressing me?
Anybody.
We would, we would have a couple different third parties come in, and then we would decide on who we want to work with. We would be doing that swiftly and quickly.
I think that's important. I don't know who else is out there that would be help, could be helping you. But that would be important, is somebody outside looking in that doesn't have to worry about their position other than you get rid of them at the board.
Correct. Jay Bennett at M A S B, both of us have already spoke with him. So, I mean, the, you got to put, as I've stated a few times in the past couple of weeks, you got to put one foot in front of the other before you can get to your, to your end goal. We needed one thing to happen to get to where we are today, and tomorrow we can start the next task. So we will decide as a board which route, if we choose a private firm or M A S B, but yes, very, very quickly, we're normally good to work, you know, pretty adamantly.
And it should be done really quickly. Jay does really quite well. I've been in some of his presentations, and he's not bad.
And then the obvious, you know, recommendations, obviously you're sitting here talking about M A S B, so, you know, any recommendations and, and, you know, things you could help us lead the way?
There are a couple people that are good. I'd have to send you an email to get their names that might, might be doing that. It's just preference, I mean, we have a conference coming up. M A S B has a conference coming up, and that would be good, and any of you can go to that conference, that would be a good opportunity, that's worth your money. It's the November eleventh, I think through the fifteenth. If that's the right day, I think eleventh is a Thursday.
Is it all virtual or in person this year?
In person.
Appreciate that.
Please provide right now, I don't know about November eleventh.
Some of them are, they're giving you the option with some of their things that they're doing.
But it's well worth your time, especially if you haven't had 101.
I think we've all had 101, yeah.
Good, that's a good start.
So the good part of M A S B having virtual is, I mean, I've taken seventeen, or sat through seventeen. You don't really get a graduation slip from each one, but I've sat through seventeen of them on, you know, building board relationship, superintendent relationship. You know, how to try to, you know, conduct a meeting, you know, stuff like that. So it's actually been quite helpful to have them virtual. Last fall, when I was elected, I was actually sitting in my deer stand and watching, you know, watching and listening to M A S B classes.
Yeah, I miss the contact, you know, with people, that's the only thing. And I've gone to M A S A for a while, but I usually show up and try to keep some contact with the different superintendents, so I know what's going on. You know, that's good, and you should continue to support those people that want to go. And if they're attending, they can come back and give you a little script, okay, this class was, I got this out of this class. You know, there's all kinds of classes right now that could be taken. And it's just some time away from family, that's one of the problems.
I appreciate, appreciate it, sir. I thank you for being here tonight, especially such, such short notice. Anything else for us? Anything else for him, I'm good for Mr. Meyer?
I enjoyed talking to you.
Thank you so much.
You told me you had.
No, you're fine. If anything, another perspective or another view of, of ways of doing things. Very much appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so how do we decide out of that, guys? I don't know how you guys want to do it. I'd be more than happy to start, you guys can kind of go from there. Three very qualified individuals that were here tonight. I guess if I was to lean someone actually quite heavily would be Tim, Mr. Everett.
If I might ask in order for it to move the process along, although I definitely appreciate having Joel for Wolfers Burger, your ideas about sharing, if we could have a vote, so we could see who's got the most votes, and then, and then work from there about the first, say, the top two, in order to then move the process along?
Sure, everybody okay with that? That's fair enough. Sarah, you want to be our vote kicker?
Okay, so I'm asking for first choice and second choice? I'm going to start with Dana.
Don is my first choice, and Tim is my second choice.
Jeff?
Tim, and then Ms. Hoddick.
Tim?
Mr. Meyer and Mrs. Hoddick.
Brad?
Mr. Meyer and Mr. Everett.
Don?
Mr. Everett, and then Mrs. Hoddick.
I'm going to say Mr. Everett and Mrs. Hoddick. Craig?
Mrs. Hoddick and Mr. Meyer. Does calculations look like?
Well, we got a tie in the one spot. But then if we went mathematically, Mr. Everett has more second place votes than Mr. Meyer.
But Mr. Meyer and Mrs. Hoddick are tied?
No, Mr. Everett and Mr. Meyer were tied in the first place, they each had three votes in the first slot.
We can't, I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I'm sorry, I spaced out for two seconds.
In the first place vote for our number one choice, three people voted for Mr. Meyer as the first, top choice. Three people voted for Mr. Everett as the top choice, and one person had Mrs. Hoddick. So the first place is a tie. So if we were to use the second place as a tiebreaker, Mr. Everett had two second place votes, and Mr. Meyer had one second place vote.
Are we going to have a point of discussion now?
Yeah, I think we should have a point of discussion before we go forward there, because in my mind, if we have two people tied for first place, I think we should discuss those two people in the first place first.
So, so we're down to two?
Well.
Is that what?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like two people in the first place, if you've got Mr. Everett and Mr. Meyer tied at first place, I think we need, we need to talk about those two people.
Okay, that makes sense for moving things along.
Yeah.
I'll start. I feel that all three were great. Mr. Everett has done this job for our district, and he retired from this job as, in our district. He knows our current administration and has worked with most of them. Knows most of them outside of the new hires. He knows our central office, and unless a few of those are, have changed, he's worked with all of them. He knows a lot of our staff, he knows a lot of our community, our students. And he has worked through bond. I just feel that, hands down, his knowledge can't be beat because he has done the job.
Oh, you go first. No, no, go, go.
Like Dawn said, I don't have anything negative to say about any of them, they're all great. I mean, there's not one bad choice. But in contradiction to what Dawn was saying, I- there's not one bad choice. Um, but in contradiction to what Dawn was saying, I like the fact that Mr. Myers doesn't know the community. He is a neutral third party. He hasn't been brought down by anything. And his, he expressed his, his willingness to say, over my first month, I will just take it all in. What's going on, what's wrong with the, the drop-offs? How do we improve board relations? How do we? You know, and I, I think there's an aspect to being that neutral third party with that willingness to, to, well, from a neutral standpoint, to assess what we have, what's good, what's bad, and then go to work fixing it.
Uh, I'll just add to what Tim said. I, I, I strongly agree with that. I think that, um, I'm a little, um, I'm a little bit concerned about a four-day work week. Um, I'm a little concerned about that. Uh, it means that we, we displace, um, someone in the district for that fifth day every week. Um, and so we put somebody in place. Um, I do love, um, I loved the, some of the ideas that Mr. Meyer, I mean, Mr. Meyer got me thinking. I mean, he, he got me, he, he, he actually, like, he was like, oh, like, board goals, like every meeting, you know, what do we do toward our goals? Like, I, I never, I never thought like that before and, I mean, and it wasn't, it's, 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 I don't think it's even something that I've seen and I've gone to many, many board meetings for many, many years at this school. I don't think that's a vision and I don't think there's a direction and it's nothing against anyone because I do think that, you know, that they all have the qualifications. I just think it's a fresh set of eyes and, um, I think sometimes, um, a fresh set of eyes can bring some really bright new light and perspective to a district that needs new light and new perspective.
I'm gonna say, um, first of all, I would like to make a hybrid person of the three. I would take the district knowledge of Tim, the passion of Jane and the, um, just really overall outlook of Dawn, like, and suggestions and ideas. Um, the reason that I would lean towards Tim at this time is because, um, we've heard issues of trust, um, in the district. And I feel like, um, somebody new coming in, that's hard to just get that right away. If we can't get somebody who already has trust and relationship, um, we're kind of a hub in the game. Um, I still would like to take Dawn's suggestions and do goals and things like that. Um, but I believe that, um, I liked what Mr. Everett said about having us this plan for getting the superintendent, getting somebody in here. Um, and I did, um, knowing ahead of time that he was doing the four-day week, work week, I reached out to some people in central office to ask if that would be a problem and, um, it seemed like it would not be an issue. So I was comfortable that they felt comfortable with that.
I, I had a similar thought about the hybrid of the three because they all bring so much great experience to the table. And I thought, you know, if Mr. Meyer was the choice, maybe we could still fall back on Tim and Jane for help in other areas. I mean, they already do a lot. Jane's very active and things constantly with her energy and and what she, the way she cares about the community, but, uh, that would, I, I mean, I'm torn. I'm really torn between Mr. Meyer and Mr. Everett because the experience in the commu, in the district is huge, I think, at this time. But at the same time, a new set of eyes really can help a lot of times. So, I know that doesn't answer everybody's question, but.
It's good, Dawn.
I would be in favor of either one. If it came down to the other, I would just have to make a decision in my own mind here in the next few minutes. But I guess I, I'm really kind of torn between those, those two.
I, I think our number one priority right now is to get the bond passed. And so based on that, uh, that criteria alone, then I would have to say that Mr. Everett would be the person that would be able to help us the most with being able to pass it because of his strong connections to the community. So in that respect alone, I would, I would support him. Even though I think Jane would be wonderful at that as, as well. I, I, I do think that since it seems to be the, um, the, uh, consensus right now, not complete consensus of the board, then I think it would be good for Tim to be the individual that be big on and, uh, focus on that predominantly. Everything else I think can, can come around with time and communication in terms of us working together.
Thank you. Um, I am still leaning towards Tim. Um, first, uh, have the honor to, to work with Mr. Everett would be, would be amazing. Um, again, all three candidates, uh, if you could put them all together would be great. Um, my, I think my biggest, uh, uh, concern would be timeframe. Um, we don't know how long they're gonna be here and, uh, um, if you're, if you're gonna, if you're gonna choose or, or my thinking between the two, um, I think Mr. Everett could come right in on Monday morning and, and knows the staff, knows our routine, knows the bus garage, knows, you know, knows our district. Um, he could come in and, and get right to work. Um, help us out, continue helping the district out, um, and, and continue working with the front office that he has worked with before. And, uh, and then help us with the, with the superintendent search.
I can say also being on the board while Mr. Everett was here, he is very supportive.
That would be helpful. That would be helpful.
I think, uh, you know, after hearing what Craig said and, and Dawn said, I, you know, the neutral third party coming in with eyes on may be more of a long-term solution. Whereas like Craig said, passing the bond is, you know, that's such a priority right now that, uh, I, I could see, you know, supporting Mr. Everett.
Yeah. Discussing the bond a little bit more and getting Craig's insight, I would probably lean in that direction as well.
We need a motion.
Craig, do you have a motion down there?
I do. I would get the motion that we, uh, offer a, um, four-day-a-week contract to Mr. Everett, uh, till, um, whenever we, uh, hire a new superintendent. Or till Christmas break, whichever comes first.
Do we need to amend that with contingent upon agreed contract?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's been something that we've even discussed and what the, uh, rate would be. Uh, and of course I'm looking at Gina. She's saying, don't look at me.
I.
I don't know, Angela, what we paid, uh, Tim when he was last, uh, interim superintendent, all those years ago.
I should have to go back and check it out and know that right off the top of my head.
So.
And, and consider his benefits as well, so.
Yeah. So per, uh, Katie brought us at, at Trum, she was, uh, she gave me the advice of that. Um, to, again, our legal firm that we pay for them to, to, to work it out. Um, if, if, uh, whomever is selected this evening, um, you know, we will start working, but is definitely in contingent to, uh, uh, agreed-upon contract.
Sure.
I will second Craig's motion.
Any other questions? Sarah, if you would, please.
Jeff, start with you.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah, is it yes? Craig?
Yes.
Dana?
No.
Motion passed. Is he still here? Would you like to go get him?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Maybe, still here? All right, we'll, we'll welcome him. If you guys don't mind, we'll go right out and we'll welcome him when he comes, when he does come in. Where are we at? Five point oh four. Uh, live streaming. Um, this was brought up again, uh, last week. Um, we have no directive. We have no policy on live streaming. Is he gone?
No, he's not, but he does have a request. Uh, he, he does feel that this needs to be a unanimous vote. He said he thinks that's important to his board and, and the message of the equation. So he is, he is asking for that or he feels it should be possibly considered for somebody else. I, can we say, I'm just, just passing it over.
Thank you. Do we go for a revote or a potential change of vote?
Yeah, I think it would be discussion, uh, and if, if not agreeable, then, then that's, that's what he's asking. I can, I can go back and let him know it's, that's what it is or, but I think that's what he feels is in the best interest of the district.
Thank you.
It, I'm, I'm not asking for you to put words in his mouth, but, um, hearing it through a third party, it's hard to, you know, I don't want to inflict a tone on it. So is it a, a tone of, man, I can't wait to work with everybody as a team? Or is it a tone of, it's my way or that's it?
Uh, the, the tone was is this, I mean, I think literally he says that it's, it's too important, that it's, it's unanimous, that that's, that's what we need. And, and he said that if not, that he, he, he doesn't feel that it should be.
Fair enough. Not to put you on the spot, would, would you be willing to rescind your vote or no?
I mean, I have, I have my reasons why I, I have not voted that way. I mean, I, I have very strong opinions why I voted. I feel like it's, it's my right as a board member to vote the way I, I, I did.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I don't want to hold up this process, um, but I do have some very strong opinions why I voted the way I did. And I do feel a little bit put on the spot, I will say.
Yeah.
Um, by this. Um, I don't think that anytime we've ever had any other vote, anyone's been questioned by the way that they have voted. So I feel it's a little bit unprofessional. I'm, I'm, um, I feel like this entire process has been a little bit unprofessional if I'm going to be point blank. Um, I think that, um, Tim supervising the entire process, um, and calling and not letting, just going through the flow was unprofessional. That put me off. Um, contacting Trevor, contacting Angela, not just showing up at the meeting, um, to me was a very unprofessional. Um, I felt, um, I felt set back by that. That was one of the reasons that put me, um, on the no vote defensive. Um, I, I'm, I'm just gonna be quite, quite blunt.
Have you ever had this before? I don't mean to interrupt. I'm just asking for guidance here. Have you ever?
Yeah, I, I've been in her position and it's very difficult. Um.
You being as poor a president, has this come up before? We, I mean, is this something that, I mean, I'd hate to table, but I'm asking, what was the process?
Well, it wasn't over an intern, but it was over, um, board president. Or busing. So, um, something to do with the busing. I definitely don't feel that we should table this. We need to come together and make a decision.
No, unfortunately.
I, I think, um, my perspective on this is that, um, Mr. Everett was very aware of what's been happening with this board. And I think this action was an effort to show, to put us on the spot to work as a team and to, to show that the differences of opinions, we can come together for an important decision like this. I don't think it was meant to call you out. Um, I, as far as I know, he doesn't know who voted, no.
He does not, no. He asked for the vote simply.
Would it, would it be, oh, I like where you're going with it. Can we just hear it from Tim?
I, I can.
Would he be willing or was he?
No.
You can't. Oh, okay.
Um, I, I think Mr. Everett has been, I mean, very experienced. He's, he's worked with the board. He's worked with conflict with the board in the past. Um, the one thing that he did press, his goal isn't to stay here forever.
I know that.
It's to get us a new superintendent. Our district needs to come together, um, and get that job done. And I think not needing to, to get to know many of us is definitely a advantage of hiring him for this. Because he's going to be able to come in and support exactly what is needed in our district. He's, he's not coming in to do anything more than what our district needs at this time. And that is to hire a long-term. If this was for a long-term situation, then I, I think that we would have to definitely table it and go back to the drawing board.
I, and I, I understand where you're coming from and I, I know that you can, you personally can feel my pain because I sat in when you guys did the superintendent interviews. And I remember you arguing your point.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I remember it was a, a four-three vote for, for a very long time and you, you, you know, you guys wanted a unanimous decision as well. I, I, I said in all those interviews, so I understand and you've, you've got to appreciate my, my views. Um, and I'm, I really am not trying to, um, I'm not trying to be defiant. I.
I know.
Uh, I, I. I'm being principled. I'm in.
I don't want that. Do, would you like a minute? Would you like to go to recess?
Yeah.
Well, and I, you know, obviously, um, we're not hearing it from Mr. Everett. So again, it's hard for me to infer a tone. You know, I don't want to assume I know what place he's coming from with it. I get his, um, I get the idea that we all need to be on the same page. But is this a red flag that he's not willing to be on the page? I mean, six people said yes, one said no, and that's not good enough? And that's just, it's not, that's the point that I'm making. I'm not saying I have firm belief in that. I'm just saying, is that something we should consider? I mean, if we're all going to work together, shouldn't we all work together?
And I think that's the point he's making.
Absolutely. Um, I, I would like to reiterate that these, all three individuals have came here to help us. Um, neither of the three need a job, for sure. They, they've, they've made that perfectly clear. Um, so I, I'm not trying to persuade. I'm just, um, I, I think a, again, to be able to walk right in on later this week or, or next Monday would be the easiest of the flow of, of operations.
Craig, do you have any thoughts?
Well, when, uh, Mr. Everett was, uh, given the last, you know, position, he had the voters, I recall, was a six to one. Uh, but that's really neither here nor there because we weren't where we are today. I, I understand Dana's, uh, position in that she's concerned about any type of unfair advantage in the process. in that she's concerned about any type of unfair advantage in the process. Of course, nobody would say that we did anything unfair, we just found out information in many different ways. Because this has been a, a hurried process, we had the M A S B tell us how we were going to do this. So it's not like, it's not like we didn't get communications from other, uh, other people may have contacted us during this all. I mean, this is typical what happens. And so I really don't, I, I, I think it's, uh, one of these situations where a six-one isn't, isn't pretty, but it's sure a good sign of support, so I, I think we will ask Mr. Everett if, if he's, would reconsider what he, what he just said.
I can, I know, but you go. I'm just, just stating before I go back and come back.
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Absolutely, we'll chew.
Go to restroom.
Would you like to let them know to?
Just take a five-minute recess.
Okay, I was gonna say, just, um, give an idea of, 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 or.
Would like to call this meeting back to order. Um, currently on the discussion of a unanimous vote for Mr. Everett with a, uh, pending contract approval. Again, we hate to put you on the spot, but if you are willing to give us your final vote.
I, I know it's the unpopular vote, but unfortunately I have to vote no.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, you know, I just came in, but I haven't, so.
He was unwilling to?
He, he says this is what you're gonna need to do for a, a new superintendent, is come together and this is, uh, you feel strongly about this.
Okay. I would make a motion to, um, put Mr. Meyer as the interim superintendent pending a contingent on a approved contract.
Thank you, sir.
Support?
I'll start with Tim.
Yes.
I was just gonna ask for, uh, some discussion, I, I think the, um, in this case, then, um, the, the board is gonna have to really consider, um, who all we're going to include in the, um, in the, uh, bond proposal effort. Uh, that's gonna have to be an extra effort we're gonna have to make, uh, to include on Mr. Hadek and, uh, Mr. Everett. Uh, that's one of the things that we're gonna, not necessarily lose, but it's one of the losses that we have, I mean, Mr. Everett's not gonna be the interim superintendent.
Yeah, I, I, sorry, I cut you off. I, I think it's a great point, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I think, uh, Mr. Everett said, even if he's not the pick, he would be very happy to help out whoever is with any of his knowledge or, or bond or whatever it came to. I, I, I think he said that.
With that, are we ready for a vote?
I think so.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Sarah, no. Craig?
Hi.
Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Send Angie now?
All right, back to, why he finds Mr. Meyer. Uh, five point oh four, uh, live streaming a video, um, in discussion last week, uh, this was brought up. Uh, we do not have a clear directive as of right now, we don't have a policy for it, we don't have a board decision for it. It was obviously implemented from, uh, the state of Michigan during COVID. Uh, during COVID, and since then, we were released in March or April, I think it was. Um, state said, we're back in person, we don't have to do live stream anymore, so it, it has more or less been me kinda working with our, our previous superintendent and, and our tech department on making sure that they're, um, that they will be there. Almost had an incident last week, we may not have had enough staff, so, um, hence my, um, my miscommunication last week of, um, I, I don't want it to be, it shouldn't be my directive. It shouldn't be my decision, it should be the board's decision, um, unnecessarily of, of what to do with those until the board can decide. Um, I apologize, we got those back up, so I'm here for a, a board decision on, uh, continuing the, um, YouTube and live stream and, uh, in leaving those on YouTube. Be very clear, um, our minutes, our, 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 uh, what's the word I'm thinking of?
He, he, they are, I mean, they're sitting together, they're, they're in agreement, it should be unanimous. Uh, Mr. Meyer did say it should be Tim's, if that was your first choice, but they all agreed that it should be unanimous.
I will change my vote on, to a yes with Mr. Meyer, but I want it to be noted that I feel that one member of the board bullied us into getting her candidate chosen.
Is that your official vote?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Off I go.
Thank you.
If this is.
Sorry.
Yes.
Seven. Um, so, we're here today, um, to ask for the board to decide. I don't want to speak for anybody, but I think we're all in accordance with it, I just, I want it to be a board decision and not mine.
I would suggest that we table this conversation and continue as we have been doing and revisit it during our workshop meeting in September. And, um, anyone could send any ideas, questions, or considerations to you, and then maybe we could work to make it a policy of how that's going to be done.
What would be the, can I ask what, what would be the objective? What, what do we think we could get done in the workshop? Are you talking to Debbie Stare?
No, 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 our committee of the whole, excuse me for my mistake there, our committee of the whole meeting in September. Between now and then, the board can research maybe how some other schools or whatever they want to do, any input they want to give, do it through email. And then work with the super, interim superintendent on building a policy for that directive. I mean, I don't, I, I personally don't see this as something going away. That's something that COVID brought out, and it, it was never done that way, it's very new for all districts across the nation of how they, you know, it's one of the things that we learned was maybe a good and maybe a bad thing, for, it depends upon the day and the time and what comes of it, and I just think that we need a little more time to make that decision.
And, and what are we actually talking about? The process of getting the video to YouTube, or how long they stay and the whole policy around it?
I mean, we may not even want to post it on YouTube, we may, some schools just post it on their school website. Some schools don't live feed it, they, they record it and then they post it. And you go to the school website if you want to watch it, I mean, there's a multitude of ways, and that's why I think we need to give it a little more time and have some discussion on it, and then decide as a group, as a team, what would be best for our district.
Is that, is that something we could ask Tammy to weigh in on? I mean, to, to give some ideas?
Like where to post it, you mean?
Yeah, where to post it, what's, what's the more streamlined approach to it, where is it gonna be easy to find? I, I like it being on, on our website, you know, because that's, it's related to the school, you know, if you're gonna look for something, that's kinda common sense. But I, I'd really like to get the back office perspective on, you know, just their thoughts, I mean, that's what they do.
I don't want to put her on the spot, so, um, we have two weeks before, we have two weeks before our committee of the whole? Would you have ample time to, to get with you?
I can contact, um, other schools and see what they're, if they have a policy, if there is a board policy, if there isn't, uh, if there is, what is it? In terms of hosting, it starts to get a little bit, you know, really, we do host it on our website, you have the YouTube channel, they click it, it, there is everything. So you have to have a way to host the video, so if we don't put it on a YouTube, then you have to have some kind of a, a media hosting service to do that so that it can be viewed, so, yeah, I can, I can do some research for you, and I would suggest that you guys kinda reach out maybe to some of your counterparts as well and see what they're doing.
Do you have a media hosting?
I'm sorry.
Do we already have a media hosting?
Um.
You said a media hosting service?
No, not our own, not, not our own service, no.
You have to use a media host such as YouTube.
Okay, that's, sorry.
And, and if there's any tech concerns that we're not gonna think of, that we should be aware of, you know, space on our servers, any security issues, any things like that, that we may not think of.
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest thing for you guys is just to decide, yes, we're gonna livestream our, our, our meetings, or no, whatever you want to do there. And then, you know, how long do you leave them up? Do you want them up forevermore? Do you need them up for a year? Is it thirty days? Is, you know, that's kinda the, I think that's been the crux of what I've heard out there too, is just, you know, when is it available until? So coming to a conclusion on something like that, um, you know, we can find out what others are doing and, you know, talk to our, our lawyers, find out what legally that, that stands as and go from there.
Yeah, it is, I, I think when we look at this, though, we should look at the, the whole picture, the whole transparency, right down to how easy is this thing to find? You know, I want to watch a meeting, I don't want to search around for five, ten minutes to find it, I hear a lot of complaints about, about that, so.
You go right to YouTube and put Penfield School Board and it comes right up?
Yeah, I say the button right on the front page.
So, so Tammy also brought up example, um, it was recommended before, it wasn't stated or anything like that, um, or agreed upon. We, again, we don't have a policy, just kinda the rule and thumb is it was recommended before to, to leave them up for thirty days.
And I would, I would hate to see you try to get too granular on this, just because technology changes. And if your board policy says thou shalt do it this way, and now there's a better way, now we've got to come back to the board and get a whole policy changed, just so we can use a better media. I think, you know, let's find out what others are doing and go from there.
So my biggest thing is, I don't want to bear the shoulders of it, um, I'd rather be a, a board decision and
Fair enough.
you know, a, a group decision rather than.
So do we have to vote on tabling it?
I, I would second. We would have Dawn's motion to table it.
So we have a motion to table to, I don't know the date.
September thirteenth, right? That's the committee of the whole?
Committee of the whole, September thirteenth.
I haven't looked that far.
Well, I'll look at the calendar.
Yeah, I don't think.
September's committee of the whole.
The thirteenth?
Yeah.
I slipped the calendar.
And seconded by Tim.
Yes.
We ready to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Brad?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah, yes. Craig?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes. And I don't see any issues of not being able to have that on there, so we'll, we'll work through it. Mr. Meyer, welcome, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for, for assisting us. As the motion, I have to make a point, as the motion was made. It is contingent on a contract agreement with our, with our district. If you don't mind, I can get your contact information and I'll work with Trevor and Gina and you. We'll get you her information and, and we can work together and. And get a, hopefully get a, a resolution.
Sounds good.
So, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Eight point oh one comments from the public.
We do have a few. Sean Game Brown is up first.
Thank you to the school board. Hello, Penfield people. I'm gonna talk about everyone's favorite subject, masks. I'm not wearing my scrubs tonight. I had to run home and change so I could wash the COVID off and get here in time tonight, but my name is Sean Game Brown. I live in Penfield. I work as a respiratory therapist at the hospital. We're the breathing people. At a meeting earlier this summer, the school board voted for our return to learn plan, which makes mask wearing, mask wearing in schools optional. Additionally, some people in our district believe this should be a choice for parents to make. As a healthcare worker in the hospital, I wanna thank the eight out of, I don't know, thirty people who are still here that are wearing their masks tonight. The Calhoun County Health Department, as well as the Michigan Department of Health, the Center for Disease Control, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and others strongly recommend universal masking for all students and staff when indoors. Now, given that no one on this board is an expert in public health or a medical doctor, as far as I know, it only makes sense for you to follow the guidance of the experts in this field. As for parental choice. Your decision to make masks optional doesn't leave parents with any choice to protect their children. Why? Because as this, as has been reiterated everywhere for the past year and a half, my mask protects you. Your mask protects me. There is no choice in the current return to learn plan for parents who want their children in school and safe. The only choice this gives parents is for their students to protect their classmates whose parents can't be bothered to reciprocate. To call that a choice feels like a slap in the face. Sure, we could enroll our kids somewhere else or virtually, but why should we have to do that when it's in your power? To keep these kids safe in Penfield schools, and we can all agree that's the ultimate goal, right? Safe in-person learning for all students. We see what's happening in school districts across the country. Districts whose board voted to begin the year without universal masking are quarantining students and staff in such large numbers that they're having to close schools for in-person learning. Is that really what we want to happen? Why are you waiting until children get sick instead of doing everything in your power to prevent them from getting sick in the first place? My wife and I are vaccinated. We as vaccinated adults are at lower risk for contracting and spreading COVID. We're almost entirely protected against the worst outcomes, hospitalization, and death. Our kids are not old enough to get the shot. So why am I here asking you to implement indoor masking in our district? Because this isn't just about me. This is not just about my son and daughter. It's not about my coworkers right here in Bow Creek. In Penfield who are stretched thin, working overtime, and struggling now already. It's about protecting everyone in this community as a whole, and I know people will argue that kids who get COVID will recover, but you know what? There are some that will not. This isn't the same strain as last year. The new strain is affecting kids. Are you willing to risk our students like that? Do the kids need to get sick before you act? Even though we see what's happening across this country, even if you're willing to risk the health and safety of our Penfield students, maybe you care about keeping the kids in school and minimizing learning loss. Because the kids who get COVID and have to quarantine are not only impacted by the effects of the disease, they're impacted academically because of time missed.
That's three minutes, sir.
Keep the kids in the classroom within the guidelines of the school board. I beg you, please implement masking when indoors in our poorly ventilated school buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Simons?
Hello, my name is Bill Simons. Congratulations, Mr. Myers. I will support you as our superintendent and I. As I will support my board in the future of Penfield. Growing up, I had, when I was in school, Mr. Kreetmer, Mr. Grimes were my superintendents. When my children were in school, I had Mr. Everett, Mr. Simmons, respected all of those superintendents. And I'll tell you what, you guys. Tonight is the continuation of the Penfield soap opera. We, we, we've got the same story, but we've got a different headline tonight. We couldn't get past our personal feelings to look at what's good for our township, for our, our school district, for our children. It's not about any of you individually. It's about our kids, about, I, I'm just, I just can't believe it. It's been a show. For, for months now. You, you gotta get it together. Mr. Everett was right. You guys have to give up some of your personal feelings for the good of the district.
Sir, I apologize. I do think that it's personally directed, and I would ask you to, to change it to the, the board itself and not one individual, please.
This is, okay, so this is not just tonight. This is more than just tonight, all right? So it encompasses more of our Penfield school, school district board. I love the district as all of you do. You gotta get your stuff together and, and. It's not about any individual. It's about all of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Crystal Newman?
You already spoke, ma'am. I can't, I can't.
I actually wanna speak on that too.
I, I can't, ma'am. I can't.
Well, then.
Uh, per our policy, you can't speak more than once.
Yes, I would also like to hope the board can change that because a lot has happened and people have comments on what has happened.
I appreciate that input. I appreciate your input. Just trying to stick to policy here. I apologize. Anyone else?
Christina, I'm gonna let you say your last name rather than you. Hi, my name is Christina Grupshinsky. I have been a part of Penfield since I was eight, as well as my husband since he was in kindergarten. We love this community so much. We wanted our three kids to go to Penfield as well. Our oldest graduated from Penfield. Last year, through a tough time, we still have a middle schooler and one in Dunlap at this time. I wanna start off by saying, no, I have not agreed with everything that has happened in recent board meetings, but with that being said, I also know that this board has taken on a lot more than previous years because of the circumstances. That no one, none of us can fully understand the amount and time and energy that you have put into our community. Also, prior to this board, I have felt helpless and defeated. Survey after survey came out asking us parents what we wanted, and there was always some excuse of why they weren't listening to the results. It was clear what the majority of the parents wanted, and we were not being listened to. With the current board, I feel like both sides are finally being heard, and it's not just one-sided. It was heartbreaking to see what last year put my kids through, so I want to thank the board. Now, when it comes to masks, masks are a distraction to the kids and the rest of the class. Kids are constantly wearing them improperly, touching them, and setting them down in places, which in returns makes them useless except for harboring all types of bacteria and viruses. This can present an even greater risk to our children. They are, they decrease oxygen levels in our kids. We couldn't even get through a full day of school last week because it was so hot. We then expect these kids to wear face coverings. We have already lost so many amazing families from the beginning of all this when they didn't have a choice. I would hate to continue to lose more. In recent board meetings, we, I have watched people sit through the whole board with no mask on and then get up and criticize that our children need to wear them in school. We had people wear them and say how serious this was and then go to events mingling with different groups of people without their mask. People protesting that masks should be mandated on my children when they have no child in the school. I just don't understand how this makes sense. When it comes to masks, I hope you can keep listening. No offense to anyone else, but I feel that the parents and the teachers are the ones that should have the opinions that matter right now. Whatever does happen, I just hope that our community can get back to just that, being a community. What I've seen lately is not an attempt to bring our community together, but to further divide us, and that's not the Penfield. I hope that's not Penfield's future because that's not Penfield strong that I've known. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So yes, we normally have superintendent comments and. I'm gonna guess Trevor didn't wanna speak tonight. Got anything for?
I, I, I will. I, I only wanna comment on, on the district and our, our great staff, and I thank them for, for all their hard work and, and providing the best first week that they can. I think that we speak to the climate that we have in this community and across this state and country, and it's a challenge. And I think we all just need to remember the challenge that we have and why we are here, and I really appreciate them all from the bottom of my heart. This is Penfield. This is who we are. We gotta build, okay? So I, I really do. I, I got mixed feelings, obviously, but I, I just really appreciate the job that I have and the people that I get to work with and the students we get to support every day.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Trevor.
Board comments.
I have some. First, I wanna thank Mr. DeVoe for stepping into this role on short notice and doing such a great job. In the first week, a lot of things happened and you didn't blink an eye, and the central office team that worked so hard, teachers, staff. I know it was hot and miserable, and everybody did a great job. I wanna thank Laura Monague, who was instrumental in doing the grant to design and redo the middle school cafeteria. It looks beautiful. If you haven't had a chance to check it out, check it out or see the photos online. And I wanted to address issues over meeting minutes. As board secretary, I do meeting minutes. I do not have access to upload things to the website for Penfield. It was an oversight on my part when we had some personnel changes. I assumed it was still happening and it was not, so thank you that it was brought to the attention. Now, all, I believe it was corrected today, all meeting minutes, up until the approved meeting minutes that the board has done are on the website now. And just to, to address drop off and pickup, I know it's been crazy. It always is the first couple of weeks of school. I wanna encourage everybody to go to your building. I know when I was reading the newsletters, every building is putting out directions. Please carefully follow the directions that forth. I know everybody has, time is valuable, but no amount of time is more valuable than student safety, so let's keep everybody safe at drop off and pickup and be patient, and it will get better. It always does when everybody gets better, so.
Real quick, thank you to the staff, teachers, secretaries. And everybody that was here tonight just for participating. We'll get through this, and we'll get better, and we'll make it work.
Guys, first and foremost, I wanna thank everyone that spoke tonight. I try to contact, if you put your email on there. I try to contact everyone. I don't know how long this will take me for tonight, but I'll work on it. As always, we very much appreciate everyone's comments and concerns. That's how we are, you know, able to do our job sometimes is, is listening to the community and, and what is in the need. So again, I very much appreciate that. Cannot talk about enough. I know it's been brought up a couple of times, but the front office. The communications this week have been absolutely awesome. I don't know who's, who's done what, so I'm just gonna thank all of you guys up there. All of you guys. It, it's a team. We try to work as a team and, and. Make Penfield the best we can, so the team up there. Everyone, the communications, the, the LOA, I can't express enough how important this LOA is for our district. Had a few bumps and bruises. But the, the great communication back to us, helping us be prepared for tonight's meeting is unprecedented, so I wanna thank you guys. With that, if nobody has anything else. I would like to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.